All right. Good evening, everyone. We are reconvening from closed session. I have nothing to report out. So we will adjourn the special meeting. It is 6:22 PM. And that will take us to, I will call to order the Parking Authority of the City of Elk Grove Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 28th, 2021, and it is 6:22. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and Chair of our Parking Authority, consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California. This meeting will be conducted by teleconference. The meeting location will be at the Council Chamber, but the Chamber will not be open to the public. I'll move us to our Parking Authority Agenda with the first item, which is that roll call. In the formation documents of the Parking Authority, the City Council sits as the Board of Directors of the Parking Authority. In our teleconference environment, I will be conducting a roll call vote soon, but I did want to note that there's no additional compensation or stipend to City Council members for their service on the Parking Authority. With that, I will be calling the roll call for the Parking Authority meeting, starting with Board Member Spees.
President.
Board Member Hume.
Here.
Board Member Soon.
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen. I think we don't have Vice Chair Nguyen in the teleconference environment at this moment. Mr. Margar is absent, and I will move on to Chair Singh Allen.
Here.
With that, we have our four of our members of the Authority, which will take us to our Section 2 Public Comment.
Okay, I will open the public comment opportunity.
So for our participants that are in the Zoom environment, currently we're in the Parking Authority Agenda, and you actually want to hold to use your raise hand function until you're in the particular part of the agenda that you wish to address. For instance, if you're here for general public comment for the City Council, you'll want to wait until we're underway with the City Council meeting. Currently, we're in the public comment segment for our Parking Authority. So if you're here with an intent to talk on the Parking Authority, you can leave those hands raised up, and we have two of you with your hands raised on this item to our Chair, Vice Chair, and Councilmember or Board Members. We did not receive any written comments prior to the meeting for the Parking Authority Agenda. But with that, it looks like we have two individuals, but we'll see if they're actually signed up for our Parking Authority Agenda or if they have matters that they wish to bring before the Council, but we'll bring them in to our virtual environment.
Ju Ding, you have three minutes if you'd like to speak on the item. Sir, you're on mute. If you could please unmute yourself, and then you can go ahead with your three minutes.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Ju. Today, I'm here to ask your support for Class B RV Parking Code Revision and put into the agenda. I want to emphasize that the code revision is only for Class B RV, not for Class C, not for Class A. I understand that in the past, some Elk Grove citizens rejected RV Parking Code Revision, but in the past, the process didn't separate a Class B RV from a Class A or Class C. So ended up the Parking Code applied to all type RVs, but actually, Class B RV is unique and different from Class A and Class C. It is, Class B, it is based on the same chassis that all service van cargo man are based on. But the serviceman cargo man or truck are allowed to park on the street or driveways. It is ironic and illogical that not allow Class B RV enjoy the same parking codes, the same as the serviceman or cargo man. They basically is the same in size or look. In addition, if the code allow Class B RV park on the street or driveway, then at the least, the people have an option in making a purchase decision. Instead, now we are hopeless. I hope soon, we can buy a Class B RV to enjoy the trip or outdoor activity without the parking troubles. Again, today, I only asking for making the changes to separate Class B RV from Class A and Class C. So that's all for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in and providing some comments. Do we have any other callers?
And I believe our other caller did put their hand back down, so I think that was our one caller that we fielded for the Parking Authority General Public Comment.
All right, then with that, I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move on to our presentation.
Now, one presentation is Item 3.1, the Annual Update on the Parking Authority.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Authority. Matt Paulin, your Finance Director here. There is no activity to report for the Parking Authority.
All right, well, that was easy. Well, I still have to say that I'm going to open the public comment opportunity procedure.
Again, just for our participants online, this is the opportunity that you would have to use the raise hand function if you have any comments on the Annual Update on the Parking Authority. I'm not seeing any raised hand function, so that would conclude that public comment.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and entertain a motion here to adjourn. Do I need a motion?
I think you can proceed to move to the adjournment if there's any other comments on Item 3.1.
All right, seeing no hands raised by colleagues, I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It is 6:28 PM. And that will take us right into our regular meeting, so I would like to now call to order the Elk Grove City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Wednesday, July 28th, 2021, and it is 6:29 PM. Clerk.
Thank you again, Mayor, and one more time, consistent with executive orders N-29-20 and N-35-20 issued by the Governor of the State of California. This meeting will be conducted by teleconference. Meeting location will be at the City Council Chamber, but the Chamber will not be open to the public. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, July 30th at 1:00 PM, and Tuesday, August 3rd at 6:00 PM. It is being closed. Caption will be webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode as we go through the process of our teleconference meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item, as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker timer will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting via direct via telephone, you can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing *9, and the City Clerk will run a speaker timer. And after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound to inform you one minute remains. And when the total three-minute time limit concludes, a series of bells will sound. Again, we remain in the teleconference environment. As we go into the roll call, I will be moving to take that roll call vote, as we will also do with any votes that are taken while we are operating in a teleconference environment. And I'll start that roll call with Councilmember Spees.
President.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Councilmember Soon.
Here.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yeah.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here.
And we have all Councilmembers in attendance that'll take a side on 1.2, the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, if I can get everyone to please rise. Mr. Lindgren, would you lead us in the pledge today?
Certainly, and present yourself to the flag, and please follow me in the Pledge Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lindgren. At this time, we will observe our moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next item.
That will take us on to Section 2, the Approval of the Agenda. And one item that I would note for the Council is that for Item 4.2 of our presentations, we were going to ask that that item be moved to the August 11th, 2021 Regular Agenda.
Right, duly noted. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
With that roll call vote, Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
And we have an agenda before us. We will move through Section 3, the Closed Session, as there are no Closed Session items on the Regular Agenda, and that will take us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, that one presentation being Item 4.1, which is the Proclamation declaring August 2021 as Diversity Awareness Month.
Excellent. And do we have our Diversity and Inclusion Commission members present?
And I believe we do have our members present. One of them has a hand raised, and I believe the other, we have another in attendance as well.
Great. The floor is yours.
So I don't know if Bobbin is here. I don't know if he wants to start first, or I can go ahead and start.
Tina, you may proceed.
Okay, so my name is Tina Lee Vote. I am a recently appointed member of the city's Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and it is really an honor to go ahead and accept this proclamation, recognizing Diversity Month. We're really excited about a lot of work that we've been doing with the Commission. I've only been on the Commission for a few months, but I've really enjoyed the opportunity to share a lot of information on the diversity of our community. And so, thank you so much again for the proclamation. It really kicks off some different things that we're going to be doing, including an educational series where we're going to be presenting information, highlighting the different cultural months and activities throughout the year. And we'll be kicking it off with an event that we have scheduled for Thursday, September 30th, in recognition of National Hispanic Heritage Month, where we're going to have a storyteller series, where we're going to be able to share information about those that have the Hispanic culture and have them share their stories within our community. So again, really looking forward to being able to share a lot more information about the different cultures within our community, with our citizens. So I'll just go ahead and give it to Bobbin.
Welcome, Dr. Parik. You're on mute.
All right, thank you. Thank you, respected Mayor, City Council Members, and thank you, Tina, for your wonderful report. On behalf of my Commission, Diversity and Inclusion Commission, I'm thankful to all of you for giving this opportunity to present our report. I will briefly summarize what we are doing this year. As you know, our goal of Diversity and Inclusion Commission is to promote cultural diversity. We want to educate our citizens about different culture, different tradition, different faith, and the goal is to bring everyone under one umbrella. We want to create unity among diversity. That's our main goal. And every year, we do celebrate multicultural festivals, which draw thousands and thousands of people at Elk Grove Park. But due to COVID restriction, we are unable to do Elk Grove multicultural festivals. So we are bringing our Diversity Month celebration in month of August. As you know, last year, we did online, and it was a very successful event. We had so many events throughout the month of August. But after getting a feedback from the community, we decided to do this year to open to the public, to do live. And we are going to do most of the event at District 56 through Neighbor Good Market every Thursday in the evening time. Now, to celebrate diversity, we are going to focus on the five talents, which is music, art, dance, faith, and culture. And we are going to bring events focusing on those talents or the domain. For music, we are going to invite, or we have very fabulous local musical groups are coming. On Thursday, on August 5th, August 12th, August 19th, August 26th, we have Way Out West. And we have a Maya Band coming on August 4th at Old Town Plaza, which is a popular late-in-old-school kids' music band. We have Inner Soul Band, which does classical rock hits. We have a Shower Diesel Band, which is a classical jazz fusion group. We have East Wind Band, which is an old-school funk soul R&B rocky party type of band. And we also have a Way Out West Band. Now regarding dance, we have, we invited different groups from the different culture. We have Polination Group coming. We have Monge Cultural Dance. South Asian and other dance groups will perform in the month of August. Regarding the art, we have two art shows. We are going to invite local artists to come and participate in art show on August 19th. And also, we have a kids' cultural art workshop on August 19th at District 56. And then regarding food, we are going to celebrate our diversity by enrolling through ElkGroveLocalPass.com, and they promote local businesses. They promote diversity in the food, local eateries. So we're going to encourage our citizens to enroll through that program, which will run from August 6th to August 15th. And last but not least is a faith, and we are going to have an interfaith prayer on August 28th at District 56 at 1:00 PM. So we're going to focus on those main five talents of cultural diversity with the goal to bring everyone together. We want to promote unity, and I'm very proud to say that Elk Grove is one of the diverse, you know, city throughout the nation. I'm very proud to serve as a Commissioner of Diversity and Inclusion. And I'm very thankful to our fellow Commissioners, all volunteers, sponsors, support from city staff, and of course, Mayor, you, and City Council Members. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Dr. Parik and Tina, for your service on this Commission and everyone else. Just great, important work that's taking place. Before I move on to my Council colleagues, who may want to provide some input, if I can get the City Clerk to actually read the Proclamation declaring August 2021 as Diversity Awareness Month.
Indeed, Mayor, and let me just pull that up for review for viewing audience. There we are. And for the Proclamation for Diversity Awareness Month for August 2021 from the City of Elk Grove, we start with, whereas the city and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission celebrate Elk Grove's diversity through several events and activities during the month of August, and whereas providing information, education, and communication can facilitate a better understanding and appreciation for our differences, and whereas events, forums, and exchanges and collaboration with organizations will promote peace and unity within our community. And whereas the city and its Diversity and Inclusion Commission strive to create a more equitable, accessible, safe, welcoming, and inclusive government and community in Elk Grove. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the month of August 2021 as Diversity Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and encourages all business entities, media, and Elk Grove citizenry to participate in activities and programs during this designated month, to take the city's diversity pledge, to read the Council's Proclamation declaring Elk Grove as no place for hate, and to take time to appreciate the diversity that exists within the City of Elk Grove. Sign this 28th day of July, 2021.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jason, for being here. And again, thank you to all of the Commissioners. I see Councilmember Soon. Your hand is raised. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly also thank Dr. Parik and Ms. Lee Vote for your work and the rest of the Commission's work. Your contributions to the city and on this Commission are highly valued. So thank you so much. Look forward to attending some of these events in August.
Thanks, City Council Member, for your comment. Thank you.
We all have this great little cheat sheet here. It's a little beautiful card put together for Diversity Month. It lists all of the events. To those tuning in, I'm sure you can find this, not only here at City Hall, but you can go online to the city's website. That will indicate the dates and the locations and the different events that are taking place that Dr. Parik and Tina described. Any other Councilmembers want to say anything? I don't see any hands raised, but I don't have a full screen. Just unmute and proceed if you would like to say anything. Otherwise, I will move forward.
I'll say real quick, Mayor, congratulations, Ms. Tina, on being a part of this group. I'm really excited to see you bring all of your fresh ideas and the changes to this amazing group that's already been doing some great things for our community. I look forward to the many events that you have listed. I got the email sent to me as well, too. Thank you, Doctor, for everything. I've worked with you on so many different areas, not just here on the Council, but also in my day-to-day line of work and yours as well, too. So it's so great to see that we can align not just here in our city, in the diversity, but also in the healthcare work as well, too. Thank you for everything you both do and your group as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you so much for your comments.
I'll just go down a little bit. Councilmember Spees, would you like to say anything?
I didn't have anything, not much to add in terms of, you know, the Proclamation said a lot of it. But I'm very proud of Elk Grove and the diversity that we have, and we continue to work on diversity in our relationships amongst ourselves. And, you know, I want to make sure that I thank the Diversity, excuse me, Commission. Much appreciated. I've worked with many of them, Dr. Parik, and of course, Ms. Vote. I appreciate you and appreciate everything that's done in the committee. Thank you much.
Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just echo everything that's been said. Thank you, Bobbin and Tina, for spending some time with us tonight and for all the work you do on this very important Commission. I personally can't wait until we can get together en masse again for the Multicultural Festival. But I will, as the Mayor pointed out, I have the card that we received, and I will definitely make it out for at least a couple of those events, because I love to support the work that you're doing. And so, if there's anything I can do for you, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Ms. Vote, you will definitely enjoy, and I'm sure you've already experienced the great work that's already taking place, but you have an excellent, dynamic group of Commissioners who really do such tremendous work lifting our community. So thank you both. And then I also encourage you to reach out to the CSD. I know that they're partnering on doing an event. I don't have, I think it's August 12th, if that's the Saturday. They are putting together, and it's not meant to be in competition with any of the work that you're doing, but it's a nonprofit that is also interested. So at least maybe in the future, moving forward for next year and beyond, you have additional allies that are supportive, but they're looking together to do a cultural event as well. That's not meant to be a competing event, like I said, but just complimentary. So please reach out to Director, either Rod Brewer or Josh Green with the CSD. I'm sure they'll be able to provide the additional information. I'll be sharing that information on social media as well, and so will the city once we get some more feedback and basically an agenda. But there's another great event taking place that I encourage you all to be a part of, and then just some natural allies moving forward as well. But thank you again for all of your efforts.
I will do, Mayor. Mayor will do. Thank you so much for your support. I appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you. Say hello to your family.
Thank you. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, so our next item would have been 4.2, but that has been moved to the August 11th meeting, which takes us to public comments.
For Section 5 of our General Public Comment, for our attendees in the Zoom environment, if you're here for general public comment to the City Council, now would be that opportunity to raise your hand and use that raised hand function or *9 for our participants on phone. With that, I will just have the quick statement that we have with our public comment, which is that members of the audience may comment on any item of interest to the public within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. A person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public who desire a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the City Council or City Manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. And we did have a series of folks that did use the raise hand function. I'll be pulling up that speaker timer, and we will proceed with hearing the public comments.
Emilina Mendoza, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, I just want to bring to the attention of the Council regarding the filthiness of the city. It's very, I've noticed it's very dirty. I've been running and walking throughout the whole month of July, and I can't help to notice, you know, shopping carts, fast-food paper bags, plastic bottles, liquor bottles, you know, all over town. Also, the plants, you know, the vines that are in the walls, they're growing, especially here where I do most of my walk, parallel to the mosquito control place here. And, I mean, there is a space for only one person barely to, on the sidewalk, because the vines are just taking over on, you know, on the sidewalk. And, you know, and then again, also the homeless people around town and kind of, you know, wandering and jaywalking streets and kind of encountering you, you know, as you're running and walking and on the trails. So I just bring it to the attention of the Council if there is any plan or anything, you know, why the city is looking the way, unkept, the way it is, and if there is any plan to address that and, you know, get this problem solved. So that's my comment for today. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for calling in. We will move on to our next caller. Thank you.
Jacqueline Canous, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Are you hearing me?
Bottom clear. Go ahead.
Elk Grove cities officials and staff, I am a member of the official anti-illegal fireworks group of Elk Grove. However, I am not speaking for the group this evening. You could follow or join us on Next Door. Traditions. That word gets thrown around during the two weeks prior and after the Fourth of July. According to Wikipedia, traditions are not customs, conventions, laws, norms, routines, or rules. The first celebrated Fourth of July in 1776 did not use firecrackers, but cannons from the ships and guns. When I was a child, very few people had the resources to have personal fireworks. We were lucky to have a sparkler and elated to have two. We're talking about the 40s through the 70s. That's 1900, not 1700, and now we're in 2021. So whose traditions were they to have personal fireworks? The tradition was families taking a blanket and picnic and going to watch the firework display and appreciate America. There are some traditions that need to be adapted to meet the changing requirements of more people and bigger cities. This is especially true when they are causing more harm than good, for instance, smoking. It's bad enough to have weeks of torture with obnoxious M80s or smaller firecrackers that startled people and animals for hours on end throughout the night. However, the potential for destructive fires is high as houses and apartments are closer together, and we have frequent doubts. We need to ban all fireworks, with the exception of professional shows. Guests, nonprofits make money from the sales of fireworks, but other cities have banned them and now have alternate fundraisers. The city could assist them in this effort with an ad hoc committee. We need to take into account the injuries, fear, and angst, PTSD flare-ups, fires, and the fear of fires, loss of water, injured first responders, lost pets, and trash left behind. One city citizen had the trash in her pool. One witnessed a neighbor's garage catch fire. If we put the allocated funds for additional fire police and medical staff, would it balance out between the nonprofit sales and the best entrance of Elk Groveans? It may be more cost-effective to have the city pay nonprofits not to sell fireworks. When there are illegal fireworks, which by the way are When there are illegal fireworks, which by the way are not safe and sane, it adds to the challenge for law enforcement to catch the illegal ones. Please do what you can by using your voices to ban fireworks in Elk Grove and California. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for calling in. Next caller, please.
And I just want to step in real quick and remind any of our participants in the audience. This is your opportunity for general public comment, Section 5 of the agenda, to use that raised hand function and hop into the order.
Lynn Wee, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. What I'd like to speak to you about tonight is something that I've been doing for well over two and a half years. I've been attending Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority meetings of which Elk Grove's a participant. This group is to come up with a sustainability plan for our groundwater. One of the projects defined within that is the Harvest Water. And what that is going to do is it's going to provide our farmers with recycled water, so it's not necessary for them to have to pump their groundwater for their crops. My concern is, as Elk Grove looks to expand, one of the areas within this Harvest Water is Elk Grove's expansion. So what will that look like in the future? Currently, the Harvest Project has $300 million funded, and it's still $100 million short. Where will that funding come from? As we look at developing a sustainable groundwater plan, the costs will be burdened by the homeowners. Some of our rural residential areas on wells will also experience parcel tax. I've expressed to the SCGA my concern about Elk Grove's urbanization and have heard from them that they're not the land use authority, that you're the land use authority. So again, I am concerned about what we're going to have in the future as a water source. I read from our general plan on 8-43, model homes may be exempted from this policy to determine appropriate by the city and subject to approval by the city. And what is this talking about? Model homes might not necessarily have access to water at the time in which they are constructed. So as our land use authority and participant with the GSP plan, I would ask that you really provide information to this group that is coming up with this plan and really discuss how you're going to be developing, especially within this area of the Harvest Water project. Will we have enough water, or will we be rationing, reducing, recycling, and anyways rationing? So lastly, I want to say, I heard today at a meeting that Councilmember Pat Hume met with Lindsay Liedig of the Farm Bureau, because there is this concern about farming and urbanization. So in meeting with her, I hope that you were able to discuss some of the things that are going on within our city as far as expanding outward. Because when the plan was looked at, the GSP plan, our Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority actually used and based some of their decision-making on the county's plan, planning, which is much different than Elk Grove planning. So again, I just hope that you will consider us and consider our future as far as water with the planning that you're doing. Thank you for allowing me to comment.
Thank you. Perfect timing there. Thank you for calling in. Next caller?
I did just want to touch base. We did have a few folks that seemed to be signed up for general public comment, but they may have exited the meeting. And just making sure, I did want to also circle back with Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members to confirm that no written comments were received for general public comment prior to the meeting. And as I look back, just to see if anybody had a change of heart on the raising hands of our participant list, I see no further raised hands. That will conclude public comment for Section 5.
All right, so we will move on to our next item.
And that next item is Section 6, General Administration Information.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Jason Bearman, city manager. I want to start with one item. First, I'm pleased to report that we're making great progress on the construction on our preserve, which is a nature area, District 56. And part of that project and the centerpiece of it really will be a small lake or a pond. And we anticipate beginning the process of filling that later this week. And so in light of the current drought, we understand some residents may question or have concerns about why the city is filling the lake at this time. So we wanted to be transparent about that and why we're moving forward, answer any questions the council might have and provide information to the council and the public. And so I'd like our Public Works Director, Jeff Warner, to provide some of that information, address any comments or concerns. Jeff?
Thank you, Jason, and good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So first, a little bit of background about the project. And when we started, the project began construction in June 2020, well before any drought concerns were apparent. The project is now 85% complete, and the contractor is prepared to start filling the lake this Friday. Staff approached the contractor about delaying this activity in light of the drought and the concerns associated with that, delaying the activity until the winter when the drought concerns were less. According to the contractor, there is no desire or benefit for them to postpone this work, and the cost impact to the city would be at least $200,000. Although staff estimates this cost to be, could be as much as $400,000 or more, these costs would be associated with additional rental for fencing to secure the site, contractor direct overhead costs, replacement of approximately 4,000 wetland bench plants, which have already been purchased and will be planted within the pond, dressing or regrading of the slopes, reapplication of the pond liner, which is actually mixed into the soil to prevent the pond from seeping into the ground at a faster rate, which would require refilling of the pond, and then additional construction management costs for extended time on the project. There are also a few, or several, operational concerns that could add additional costs or operational impacts. First of all, the well and the irrigation system and float control will not be able to be tested and put online until after the lake is filled, which would further delay acceptance of the project and opening of the preserve. The pond will need to be dewatered to complete the work, since the remainder of the preserve and portions of the aquatic center will continue to drain into the pond. This would be in the form of irrigation and stormwater. This means we could have significant weed growth within the pond by the time we are, we want to finish the lining and/or fill the pond in the winter. Also, the sides and the bottom of the lake may need to be moisture-conditioned and recompacted if allowed to sit for too long without moisture. That could add a significant cost and operational impact as the contractor would need to bring in additional equipment across the already-finished areas and into the lake itself in order to complete that work. It's also important to note that the lake will be filled with groundwater using the lake's dedicated pump and well system that were established with the project. This has two very important results. The first is that there will be, there is no violation or penalty associated with this water use. And the second is that there is no immediate impact to surface waters, which are much more impacted during the hot summer months due to evaporation loss. So in other words, since we're using groundwater, whether we postpone until the winter or fill the lake now, there should not be a significant difference in impact to the water table and certainly no impact to the surface waters. So in summary, postponing filling the lake would result in substantial financial and operational impacts to the city, and there is no apparent significant difference to the water table whether we fill now or postpone into the winter.
Thank you. That was very thorough. Great justification for filling it, particularly not only the financial burden, but just the water table. I think that that's important. The groundwater use, definitely great information. I appreciate that. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Mr. Bearman?
No, but maybe I'll pause just for a second and see if councilmen, before I complete the rest of my report, see if council members have any other questions.
Um, let's see. I see Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. No further questions, but I do want to acknowledge and appreciate your mindfulness, Jason and Jeff, of, you know, what the condition that we're in, and explaining to everybody the details that go into finalizing this project. I don't think it's intuitive that people would, you know, consider weed growth and things like that in unfinished condition with stormwater and irrigation runoff. So those are very real concerns, and so I appreciate you explaining that to everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, and just the idea of having this open ditch, even with the fencing, is troublesome. So I definitely think that this is a wise recommendation. Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo Councilmember Soon's comments there relative to, you know, just being transparent and open about this. Obviously, it's not ideal timing, if you will, but the project had been in the works. And to the mayor's point there, I mean, this is a significant hole in the ground at this point that presents both an attractive nuisance and a considerable risk to potentially a small child falling off one of the elevated structures. So, you know, I appreciate the report from Jeff and Public Works to kind of say that it's like-like as far as the groundwater trouble is concerned. So thank you.
One more thing, if I may, and I failed to include this in my report, but the lake will provide a significant form of habitat for wildlife and birds, as well as aquatic wildlife. So that is another benefit to getting this reestablished. It had existed previously. We've certainly improved it with the project, and now we'll continue to provide that benefit long-term.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, feel free to unmute. Otherwise, we'll let Mr. Bearman continue with his report. Thank you, Jeff.
Good. Thank you. All right, continuing on. So as part of the statewide mutual aid system, four Elk Grove Police Department units have been deployed to Plumas County, and four more will deploy tomorrow as part of the Dixie Fire Mutual Aid Process to assist with traffic control, evacuation, security assistance with any new evacuations. Police Department does not anticipate sending any more units to fire unless something changes. Elk Grove Civic Summer Program is wrapping up this week. Program collaboration between the city and Elk Grove Unified School District introduces high school students to careers in public service. Thirty-three students participate in two weeks of classroom. I know many of the council members participated in that, in that kind of a classroom-style learning, followed by a three-week internship with various local governments and community partner agencies. Students will complete the program with the graduation ceremony this Friday, on, just Friday, July 30th. We already talked about Diversity Month here in Elk Grove, looking forward to a lot of exciting activities associated with that. So I encourage our viewers to go on the city's website and find out ways that you can participate in all the activities that are planned. Another announcement, the Disability Advisory Committee is seeking nominations for businesses, organizations, and individuals who go above and beyond for individuals with disabilities in Elk Grove. Applications for the annual accessibility awards are available at elkgrovecity.org/dac. Nominations will be accepted through August 6th. I'm really pleased to report that the Police Department recently added a second Mobile Crisis Counselor to the Mobile Crisis Support Team to assist community members experiencing mental health crisis. The Mobile Crisis Support Team was launched in 2017. Program pairs specially-trained officers and licensed mental health professionals. Last year, the team logged 485 interventions. The program is funded by Sacramento County Division of Behavioral Health Sciences through the voter-approved Prop 63 Mental Health Services Act. Also pleased to report that the Elk Grove Citizens Academy is set to return and begin on August 24th, a 10-week program designed to inform and educate community members on the various aspects of municipal policing. Participants learn about patrol, investigations, vehicle operations, arrest, control techniques, 911 communications, and more. Continuing with the theme of public safety, a reminder, National Out is scheduled for next Tuesday, August 3rd. Great nationwide community building event that promotes policing, community partnerships. Members of the community can learn more at the Police Department website. I know council members are signed up to go to a lot of these next weeks, so looking forward to being there with you. Center at District 56, another was recently awarded Gold Certification by the Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design U.S. Green Building Council. That's also known as LEED, their certification program for building design and construction in terms of energy efficiency, water usage, air quality, and choice of building materials. So congratulations to the project team for earning LEED Gold on that community center project. A public draft of the South American Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan has been released for a 60-day review period. Comments pertaining to the draft plan may be submitted to Jennifer Law Carson of Kennedy Jinx Consultants at SASBGSB, comments at kennedyjinks.com. Comments must be received by 5:00 on August 18th. More information can be found at SASBGroundwater.org. And finally, the chief's community advisory board is now accepting applications for several openings. The cab is intended to provide a forum for discussions concerning community concerns and the goals to have a broad spectrum of viewpoints represented. Board members were collaborative with the police chief on community policing strategies, police-community relations, increasing public awareness regarding policy issues, and other topical issues. To learn more about the cab and how you can apply, visit the Police Department website at elkrovedp.org. And that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. I, too, was planning on doing a shout-out for the Mobile Crisis Support Team. So thank you for bringing that up. Just tremendous work there. Given how important mental health is right now, mental health crisis, so that we have those additional supports to address this high-needs area is very commendable. So I just also wanted to bring additional awareness to that and support. As we've seen even in the Olympics, it's being played out right now with one of our gymnasts, Simone Biles, who's not participating just to address mental health issues. So this is very important and very timely, and I just really appreciate that we have additional resources to address this and work in a unified manner with trained professionals to answer those mental health crisis phone calls. So that's just tremendous work. Great job, Elk Grove PD. I don't see any questions or hands raised. Feel free to unmute. Otherwise, we will move on to our next item. All right, seeing no questions, we will go on to our next item.
That will take us to Section 7, the Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, I will go ahead and open the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, if you are interested in providing comments on the consent calendar items of Section 7, now is the time when you use the raised hand function. It's also star nine for those that are calling in. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no written comments that were received in relation to the consent calendar items. And then as I take my attention over to our attendee list, I am not seeing any raised hand functions for the consent calendar. So with that, no written comments, no raised hands. That will conclude public comment for Section 7 Consent Calendar Items.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and get a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Motion, Spies?
Checking in by Soon. I just also wanted to very quickly highlight item, I lost it, sorry. 7.8, for those interested, it's our CIP program, Quarterly Status Report. Folks can just get a view or a peek at all the good work that's happening within this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Soon. We have a motion and a second?
That motion and a second. We will move to the roll call vote, and I'll be starting with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Soon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor, when?
I'm an eye on everything except for 7.7. I'd like to abstain from item 7.7, please.
Duly noted. We will note your abstention on item 7.7, but a yes vote for the remainder of the consent calendar items. And Mayor St. Allen?
Aye.
And with that, the consent calendar items, for the most part, will pass 5-0. There is the 4-0 and an abstention on item 7.7. The abstention by when?
Very good. We will move on to our next item.
That will take us on to Section 8, our public hearings, starting with item 8.1, which is a public hearing to consider a determination of public convenience or necessity for the sale of beer and wine, ABC Type 20 license for bottles of the project.
All right, I see we have a report here. There we go.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Antonio Ablog here to present the bottles-up determination of public convenience or necessity. This project consists of a determination of public convenience or necessity, or otherwise known as a PCN for a Type 20 alcohol license from the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC. The Type 20 license would allow for the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption. It would not allow for hard liquor sip. The request is for an existing commercial building located at 8470 Elk Grove Boulevard. Again, that's an existing location. The applicant for this project has provided a four-floor plan for that approximately 2,400 square foot space. This will be categorized as a retail store, as alcohol sales will be under 50% of the floor area. However, based on factors that I'll present to you tonight, the project does require that letter of public convenience or necessity. Alcoholic beverage control, or ABC, does require applicants to obtain this public convenience or necessity determination when an establishment is located within an area that's determined to be high crime, or when the census tract that the project is in is deemed over-concentrated by the ABC standards. As far as crime, we did look at this. As far as crime, we did look at this property. It is determined that it does have a 146 crimes reported for 2020. That is higher than the average number of crimes reported for each of the 26 subsectors for the beats for the police department. That average number of crimes is 104. However, when you compare to the quadrants immediately surrounding this area, the 146 crimes is roughly equivalent to those. When you look at some of those average numbers, those include some of the rural areas and subsectors with lower populations, therefore, the average crimes is lower. But it's comparable to those areas immediately surrounding this project site. As far as the census tract data, the project is proposed to be located in census tract 93.68. Based on ABC's factors, the, based on the population and the existing numbers of alcohol licenses within that census tract, ABC has determined that any number of licenses over two result in an over-concentration. And looking at where the existing licenses are, you can see from the map before you, there are two licenses immediately adjacent to the subject site. However, the other three in the district are over a mile away, with the nearest being the alcohol license at Costco, and then two other locations that do sell alcohol further to the south and west at AMPM and the Walmart store. So planning staff, in conjunction and assistance with the police department, did look at you know, the factors for which a PCN can be issued pursuant to our Elk Grove City Code. One of those is the proximity and number of other retail outlets selling alcohol. Just going back to the map I just had up, there are only two locations selling alcohol for off-site consumption immediately adjacent. Those other locations that do sell alcohol within the census tract are located quite a distance away. Another factor we look at is the proximity of the requested location to schools and playgrounds or other facilities serving young people. Staff did look at that. As far as schools, there's no school that is closer than one mile from the subject site. And then as far as the nearest park, the nearest park is approximately half a mile away from the site. The site is kind of nestled up close to the auto mall, so it's largely commercial uses surrounding that. One of the factors that we also look at is the proximity of the site to residential neighborhoods. The closest residential neighborhood is over 750 feet away to the north, so we don't believe there will be any impact to that residential neighborhood. And then finally, it's whether the retail outlet provides a wide range of desirable goods and services or unique type of goods and services. And with this location, we believe it will offer convenience to customers within Elk Grove where they can have quick access to the products that the retail store will provide, instead of like a Costco where a customer would have to navigate both through the parking lot and through the store to get to some of those goods that this store would provide. As far as environmental review, staff did review this project in light of the California Environmental Quality Act. We've determined that the activity is covered by the common sense exemption, which applies to projects that have that, SECA only applies to projects that have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment since this since the granting of this PCN will only expand the services at the existing shopping center. It will not bring about any physical change that would affect the environment. With that, staff does recommend the City Council adopt a resolution finding that the project is exempt pursuant to SECA Section 15061B3, which is the common sense exemption, and approving a determination of public convenience or necessity for the Type 20 alcohol license requested. And that concludes my presentation. Staff is happy to answer any questions, should you have any. And I believe the project proponent is also available for any questions.
All right, I will move to declaring that the public hearing is now open. And I will invite the applicant to speak. If they choose to speak, that would be their opportunity. Is the applicant available or interested in speaking?
Believe we have the applicant on the attendee list, and if the applicant would like to speak, I think you just have to unmute on your side, and then you would be ready to go.
Maybe the applicant doesn't want to speak?
Yeah, and we're just trying to reach out to them, see if we can get them. And let me just try a few more tricks here.
Thank you everyone for your patience.
We were almost there, I think.
Oh, I saw something and it disappeared.
We did, it disappeared, so. You're coming through just very faintly. If you can either turn up your volume on your side, that might help us to hear you.
Hello?
Indeed, there we are, nice and clear, Mr. Berman.
I was seeing it, and then like everything went muted, so technical difficulties.
Please proceed, we can hear you loud and clear.
I honestly, I couldn't hear anything prior to it, so it was like my computer, like I don't know what happened with Zoom. I apologize. I couldn't hear anything before you guys.
To give you a sense, Mr. Ablog gave an overview of the project, your application, and what's proposed under the staff report. This is your opportunity as the applicant to make any opening remarks before we take public comment on the item, so you're free to comment on the project as you wish.
Okay, well, the overall, the overall project that me and my, who I'm representing, Paul Verk, just want to do like a basic convenience store that's operating with beer and wine. Want to bring like a nice, clean, new-age generational, you know, inventory of products when it comes to like like craft beers and, you know, high-end products for the Elk Grove area. We're familiar with like, you know, recent past histories in, when it comes to dealing with like businesses of that sort. Like liquor, we're not a liquor store, but generally like with liquor stores and stuff, we're not trying to promote anything that's like, you know, bringing in cheap products to the, to the city of Elk Grove. Our business model is going to bring a nice, clean, convenient store, is going to be partnering up with some local businesses and breweries, and, and generate some nice, good, clean business and products for the city of Elk Grove with the business bottles up. We actually have a bottles-up location in the city of Citrus Heights right now, so. Yeah, is that, just like a little general overview over the staff product.
Thank you. All right, does that conclude your opening remarks?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is like my first time, I didn't know.
Don't worry.
I didn't know what to like, kind of say or expect you to, I'm sorry. I mean, I'm looking forward to conduct business in the city of Elk Grove, and you know, I've actually lived here my entire life. Me and my representative, Paul Verk, been here for 20-plus years, and just want to kind of like, you know, continue to stay in the city of Elk Grove. We have homes and families, you know. Children and nieces and nephews all go to all the local schools here. I mean, I went to Sheldon High School and Pleasant Grove and all that good stuff, so like, I really want to like develop and help expand the city of Elk Grove with my own business models and, you know, future developments I have.
Sounds great.
So, yeah, I guess, yeah, there you go.
All right, well, that was good. Thank you. With nothing further, I'm going to go ahead and open the public comment opportunity. If there's anyone else who would like to speak.
That would be the prompt for our attendees in the Zoom environment for item 8.1. This is your opportunity for some public comments. What I will note to Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members is that there were no written comments received in relation to item 8.1. But as I was speaking, one of our members of the audience did raise their hand, and we'll bring them in to the public comment environment here. Let me just pull up that speaker timer.
Emelina Mendoza, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yes, I would just like to say that I, I don't agree with, with this business being here in Elk Grove. You know, I've been living here for 27 years, and even though I've seen Elk Grove grown so much, I would like to, I hope that the city could be kept as a family oriented place, you know, of a place where family wants to move into because it does have that feeling of a community and not, you know, a city that is full of things like alcohol and, you know, in every corner you look around, like you know, you just mentioned, you know, that there are alcohol that are sold around that area, so I don't think we need another one. You know, I, my kids are pretty much grown now. My youngest is 15. However, you know, I, I feel like Elk Grove really need, need places for families to take their kids to, to be, you know, entertained and to keep that family feeling of this town. Otherwise, you know, pretty soon, I just have a feeling that we're just going to become, you know, a South SAC city because, you know, we already having so much of the problem with homelessness here and or homeless here in our town, and people asking for money and harassing and all that stuff when you go to the store. And now we adding more, you know, stores that sells alcohol, providing that kind of environment. So I, I, I hope that, that, you know, you consider that when you make your decision regarding this business coming in in Elk Grove Boulevard. So I thank you very much.
Thank you for calling in. Are there any other callers?
And with a review of our attendees, I do not see any further raised hands, and with no written comments, that'll conclude public comment for item 8.1.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity, and I will invite back Mr. Verk, if you want to make any closing comments.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, just respond to Ms. Emelina. Yeah, I totally understand where she's coming from when in regards to like involving alcohol and homelessness. And that's definitely something that we're not looking to do at all. Like I previously said, and I've been working with Mr. Antonio, and I voiced my opinion and how I feel in regards to avoiding that type of futuristic scenarios. Obviously, I did stress, stress the point that, you know, when I come into the business office, I'm going to have a good, clean operations. I'm well aware of what she's speaking of in regards to, you know, fear of Elk Grove turning into like South SAC, but at the end of the day, there's ways to avoid that, obviously, you know, when, when you don't allow yourself to involve like low, low-end products to be sold at your store. So that's why, you know, we're coming in, you know, we have, we have kept that in our thoughts when it comes to, you know, building the layout and, you know, deciding what to sell to the locals, of course. So we're just trying to keep it like good, clean, and, you know, try to avoid that scenario at all possibilities. And obviously, you know, you know, do something, do something, you know, for the community and not just try to make a quick dollar off of any cheap little, little liquor store product, you know? So I do hear what she's saying, so that's, that's definitely something that we are keeping in our forefront when we're going to be opening up this business, or if we do get the blessed opportunity to.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Verk. Were you finished?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, no worries. I will go ahead and now declare that the public hearing is closed and open it up for council direction and deliberation. Let's see, we can start with Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too understand the concerns raised, and, you know, the small-town feel of Elk Grove and the sort of that, that feeling of a smaller community than we really are has been a cornerstone of my public service. And so I appreciate somebody that's been here for 27 years, how they've seen that change, but I think that that still exists, and I don't think that this project is detrimental to that, as you heard from the applicant and in reviewing their other existing business. You know, this is not just a typical liquor store, convenience store. There, there, it's going to be more of a, at least from what I can tell or envision it, more of a destination for people who are looking for harder-to-find product, rather than something that's just close and cheap and easy. And so I think that's what I heard the applicant iterate himself. I am heartened by the fact that he was a graduate of the local schools and a raised up here in Elk Grove, and so certainly, I don't believe he would want to do something detrimental to his own community. So with that, I'm certainly encouraged to hear the comments of my colleagues, but I would go ahead and move the item.
Thank you, thank you, sir. We have a motion. We'll continue on with some deliberations. We'll go on to Councilmember Spies.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I'm, I'm happy to second the item. But I do appreciate Ms. Mendoza calling back or commenting again because I do want to echo some of the, some of the opinions that Councilmember Hume expressed. The city of Elk Grove is very concerned about keeping the city of Elk Grove a great place for families to, to continue to have, you know, a great place for kids to learn, to, to play in parks, right, to be safe in the streets. That is very much a focus. And, you know, perhaps maybe later we'll, we'll get an opportunity to refresh some of the discussion relative to your other concerns relative to trash and homelessness. I believe we have some meetings that we're planning for Town Hall. So I do want to say that I appreciate Mr. Verk's application. I'm glad to see that, like myself, he grew up here in Elk Grove. I think he's invested in the community, and I certainly look forward to having the, looking to see that this gets approved tonight.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second. We'll continue on with some deliberations. I will go on to Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pretty much stand with the, my former, or excuse me, my previous council colleagues and their sentiments. I also appreciate Ms. Mendoza's comments, but as you heard from the applicant, Mr. Verk, I'm glad he was able to speak a little bit about his vision and his background. I think, I think his heart's in the right place. What he's wanting to do is provide a service to the community and of all things, preserve the neighborly feel of the community, so I also support this, this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, Win.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll be quick. Again, thank you, Ms. Mendoza, for bringing up the issues and with your concern. We're all parents, and so we all agree with you, and we appreciate you bringing these concerns forward. But I also agree that Mr. Verk, and he found that those could be issues as well, too, and that he brought some ideas in which he is going to put in place to ensure things like that don't happen, and so I appreciate that. I'm in supportive of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just reiterate some points that were brought up in our staff report, namely two points. This was reviewed by our police department, and then secondly, it was reviewed by planning, building, and code enforcement. And none of the reporting departments noted any issues with the proposed location. I'm definitely in support of this as well. I think that this will be a great new business for our city. I am looking forward to visiting and seeing what unique products that will be available, and I definitely appreciate that this will be owned and operated by somebody here locally. So I'm happy to support somebody here locally as well. So we do have a motion in a second on the floor. We'll go for our roll call. Mr. Clerk.
That roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spies.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The motion of item eight point one and the accompanying resolution are adopted five oh.
Thank you. We will move on to our next item.
Take us to item eight point two, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to and restatement of the solid waste collection services franchise agreement with Allied Waste Services, North America LLC, AKA Republic Services, Inc.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Tracy Galart, Recycling Coordinator with the Recycling and Waste Division. The item before you.
And Ms. Galart, we lost your audio. If you can kind of backtrack a little bit and just make sure that we're all. Yeah, you're coming in now loud and clear and. Powerpoint was moving through just fine. Please proceed.
Awesome. So today's item is a public hearing in consideration. Of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to and restatement of the solid waste collection services franchise agreement. A little bit of background for you. On April thirteenth, Allied submitted their franchise application. And on April fourteenth, council reviewed terms for a proposed new agreement from Allied. On the May twenty sixth meetings, step one was completed where council approved resolutions of intent to grant a new franchise agreement. And amend the existing agreement. So today, July twenty eighth will be step two, which is our public hearing. And consideration of the new agreement and amendment to the current agreement. Little bit of background for you. SB thirteen eighty-three was passed in twenty sixteen. It requires all jurisdictions to divert organic waste from landfill disposal. And the current agreement requires an amendment necessary to implement the additional programs and services required by SB thirteen eighty-three. HF and H consultants assisted the city in negotiating terms for an amendment to the existing franchise agreement, which includes continuation of existing programs. As well as implementation of new required organic waste services and related programs. In addition, HF and H also performed a financial review which determined the agreement upon. Which determined the agreed upon terms and cost increase was reasonable for both Republic and Rate Payers. The following are key program changes. First, Organic Waste Collection Service will start on July first of twenty twenty-two. The agreement term will extend through June thirtieth of twenty thirty-one. Green waste will then be organic waste and will be collected weekly. There will be changes to our cart colors by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two per SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. And just a side note there for you, the cart deployment will occur over the course of a few months, starting in early twenty twenty-two. Versus on an as needed basis to reduce confusion and increase compliance. Additional organic waste collection and related services pursuant to SB thirteen eighty-three such as a contamination monitoring program. Procurment, food recovery program, public outreach and extensive reporting requirement. The, an overview of those proposed changes are included in your staff report. Service will start July first of twenty twenty-two. As you might recall, this is a delay of six months from SB thirteen eighty-three implementation requirement of January first of twenty twenty-two. There will be a rate increase implemented on July first of twenty twenty-two with an average increase of approximately twenty-two point nine seven percent. There is a draft rate schedule included in the agreement. A final rate approval will follow a form of public noticing process in the spring of twenty twenty-two. And as a rate increase minimization strategy, the rate increase will include a reduction in the franchise fee from ten to eight percent. So this evening, staff recommends that council approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the Second Amendment to. And restatement of the solid waste collection services franchise agreement with Allied Waste Services of North America. In closing, myself as well as staff from our Public Services, as well as our consultant HF and H are available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open. And I will invite the applicant to speak if they wish.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can. You're coming through loud and clear.
Perfect. Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Wynn and councilmembers. This is Anna Rulon, the Municipal Sales Manager with Republic Services. Real quick, I just wanted to thank city staff and HF and H for all the work that you all put into on this amendment. It's always a joy to work with city staff and they and HF and H made this a very organized and amicable process. We love working for the city of Elk Grove and we look forward to the opportunity to implement comprehensive organic waste programs throughout your city. I doubt you will have any questions for me as your staff did such an amazing job the past few months of presenting you all with the facts, but I am here if you should have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Anna. All right, I will open the public comment opportunity at this time.
And for those attendees in our Zoom environment, your opportunity would be to use that raise hand function. If we have any callers, you'd use star nine, but that would put you into the queue for item eight point two. And Mayor Vice Mayor and Council members, there were no written comments that were submitted prior to the meeting for item eight point two. And as I look over our listing, we just have the project applicants that are queued up and ready to go, but they don't have their hands raised. So. But if there are any questions of them, they'd be able to field those, but that'll conclude public comment for item eight point two.
Great. Then I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and invite the applicant back if you want to provide any closing comments. Being none, I will, unless there is one, I don't see any hand raised.
There was a brief moment where Ms. Rulon, if you had any further comments.
If not, this is Hume. I'd move the item.
Second from Soon.
Okay, thank you. Hold up, hold up. I need to declare the public hearing is now closed. And we do have a motion in the second. This item's been before us several times. So we just appreciate the partnership also with Republic Services and providing all of the additional. Answers that we were looking for over the last few months and being a great working partner. Thank you, staff as well. Don't see any hands raised additionally, so we will, we have a motion in the second on the floor.
With that motion and a second, that will take us on to a roll call vote and that will be starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Soon.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of item eight point two will pass five oh.
All right, thank you. Let us move on to our next item then.
Next item is eight point three, a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending the Old Town Special Planning Area to allow tattoo and piercing studios upon approval of a conditional use permit.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Christopher Jordan presenting this item for you this evening. This is a return of an issue that you last saw back in May. Just a little bit of recap for you. The topic of tattoo studios and piercing studios, they are currently prohibited in the Old Town area of the city. They were determined to be a restricted use based upon a council determination in late twenty nine, two thousand nine. In February of this year, though, you heard public comment and interest from opening a tattoo studio in Old Town. You directed staff to inquire about that and conduct some preliminary analysis on it. Staff returned with that in late May and at that time you directed staff to go and prepare amendments for consideration. In June, staff presented those to the Planning Commission for their review and recommendation and now they're before you for consideration and possible adoption. Recapping the analysis which you saw previously, there's currently one tattoo establishment in the city today. It's Emerald Tattoo that was established in about two thousand sixteen. There are no others staffs aware of. Since the original two thousand nine decision for Old Town, the legislature has adopted the Safe Body Art Act, Law of twenty twelve. Which prohibits tattoos for those under eighteen, requires public health permits from the county and requires annual training and inspection of the businesses by the county. There are other tattoo studios and similar sort of neighborhoods and communities around the region. Staff's given reference to locations in Folsom Land Park and Old Town Franklin as examples. For reference, the city does not require a special business license for this type of use, nor do any other cities and municipalities in the region. The outreach that staff conducted back in May was informal with a range of business and property owners and residents in the area. Generally, business and property owners were supportive of the concept of mixing up the range of uses in Old Town and allowing limited relaxation. With some caution around how the number of permits would be issued and how that would occur. The residents that staff spoke with had a little bit more concern, potential detriment to the neighborhood. The opportunity to take space away from other prime businesses that may be better aligning with the vision for the area. Alignment with objectives for Old Town, limitations on cross shopping with other businesses and concerns about business to business interactions. In May, you considered all this and directed staff to proceed with drafting amendments that would allow tattoo and piercing studios subject to approval of conditional use permits. You directed that there should be a maximum of two use permits for the entire district. Given the prior approvals for Emerald Tattoo, there were concerns around what sort of conditions would be imposed. And having some level of parity between the existing business and any new businesses that may come in. So staffs moved forward with preparing amendments and that include limited conditions and operational restrictions. So they're no more stringent than other studios in the city. So based upon that, staff's recommendation is in two parts. First is the formal adoption of regulations, which I'll get to in a moment. But the second is maintaining a series of guidelines that we would use for conditioning future projects. And essentially, these come directly from the existing approvals for Emerald Tattoo. They detail that in your staff report and we've attached them for reference if you're interested. But just to highlight a few of these, these include limited hours of operation from ten AM to ten PM unless extended hours are approved by the Development Services Director. Prevention of loitering, limiting access to minors, prohibiting gang related tattoos from being applied. That the business owner is responsible for conduct of persons employed or retained by the business. And that criminal acts are a basis for revocation of the permit. So there would be parity between the uses and the different locations of the city under this approach. In terms of environmental review, these changes will not alter the density or intensity development considered in the prior sequel negative declaration for the Old Town SPA. So pursuant to state sequel guidelines, section one five one six two, no further environmental review is required. Mentioned Planning Commission reviewed this in June. They did hear public comments for potential separation requirements for these establishments from schools and churches. Planning Commission discusses at length, looked at some exhibits, maps that staff was able to pull up during the discussion. Identify that there are limited schools and churches in and around the Old Town area. And that the distance separation that was being considered or proposed would provide limited reach and benefit. Essentially, the block lengths in Old Town, particularly around things like the Methodist Church are about three hundred to four hundred feet in length. So that wouldn't actually go very far along if you were to do a distance of about that length. Further, Planning Commission noted this would be inconsistent with council's prior direction on the matter, so did not include any changes as suggested by the public comment. Ultimately, the commission voted five to zero to recommend approval this evening. So with that, the recommendation before you is to find the action exempt from sequo and adopt the ordinance approving the amendments to the Old Town Special Planning Area. That concludes my presentation. Available for questions if you have them.
All right, thank you. I will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be that opportunity under item eight point three, which is related to the Old Town Special Planning Area allowances for tattoo and piercing studios. I will note to the Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members that we did receive two written comments prior to the meeting. Those were circulated to the full council and city staff. And then I do see some folks queuing up with their raised hands, so we will move over and pull up that speaker timer.
Allen Vito, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
We can. Please proceed.
Sorry. Hey, hey, Mayor Bobby Singh Allen and council, thank you guys so much for everything that you've done to help me and my family up until this point. Just wanted to say how excited we are for the future of Old Town and how excited John Laurent, you know, he's, he's a tattoo artist that we will have applying for. Is going to be applying for, for hopefully the first business license in Old Town. And we are so excited for the future. I mean, we were all at the Plaza during the opening and I really think that. There's nothing but good things in the future of Old Town and thank you guys so much for being so helpful and kind and I really am excited for the future. You guys have done nothing but, but walk us through this process and, you know, reminding us to make sure that we're here at the meeting and show our support and. We really appreciate everything that you guys have done and I cannot wait until we get this approved. Thank you so much. Have a great rest of your guys' night.
Thank you.
Danny O'Neil, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Yeah, good evening. I just wanted to, first off, say I appreciate you guys allowing us to come and speak in support of this. I've known John for over a decade now. I am a tattoo shop owner in Rockland, just because it was easy for me to, to start a business there. I, I'll tell you that the type of talent that John Lauren is, he will absolutely bring people in that will patronize other businesses and make Elk Grove and, or Old Elk Grove. You know, a place that people want to be and hang out. The type of art that he does. I, I noticed that they mentioned about gang related tattoos and things like that. And in my shop, we cater to law enforcement, military veterans. I'll, I'll tell you that John has absolutely classy and amazing artwork that will bring people in from all across the country and probably the world. He's that type of artist. So I hope that you'll support him and, and his business endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you for calling. Next caller.
I do not see any further raised hands from our attendees in the Zoom environment and that will conclude our public comment under, hold on, we've got some more folks that are interested. And we'll have staff pulling them in. I would, for all of our attendees, if you are here, we're under item eight point three. This is the opportunity for public comment. If you use that raise hand feature, then it lets us know that we can proceed forward. So we've got a couple more folks that are signed up to speak. We'll pull them in.
John Laurent, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. We can.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and respected council members. My name is John Laurent. I am a local artist here in Elk Grove. I reside here. I also grew up here. So this is my home. My profession is permanent body art tattoo work. I work in many more mediums, but tattooing is what gives me a steady income. Unfortunately, I work out of town because there's extremely limited options in Elk Grove. So it is time for Elk Grove to get current with the times and accept artists and their expertise with permanent body art. I think we're making a good decision here. Old Town needs a change. It needs diversity. And I can bring that. Just want to thank everyone who, who reached out, called in, emailed or wrote in. I can't wait to work with other neighboring businesses to help Elk Grove, Old Town especially. And. Just work together to create even, an even better town and city. I want to thank especially the council members and the mayor for all the support in this matter. Unbelievable help. Also just want to share everybody. That. I know that people are concerned about. The health and safety of individuals as well as minors. My business will only. Run and operate with adults. I will not have piercings in my shop, but. Tattooing, most definitely for all individuals over eighteen. And I encourage everyone to view my work online. You could find me on John Laurent Art on Google, Instagram. And. I just want to say thanks again and I appreciate it. All the work, all the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Laurent. Go on to our next caller.
Allen Vito, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi, I did, I went, I know like everybody else does. We want to make sure you can hear us.
Yes.
Okay, so I want to thank everybody, and I think you could hear the emotion in John's voice and the excitement and the emotion of my son's voice. This is something that both of them guys put together and brainstormed, and thought would be a great thing. I was like, man, I don't know, you know, to ask the city for more, but with what the city's already doing in Elk Grove and all the changes and just the whole, I think the word is synergy that is brought by this new complex that you put in, the Railroad Street project. And when the Dust Bowl Brewery comes and just all the great things that are coming, I think that John Laurent and his humbleness and his expertise in his artwork is going to be such a beautiful addition to Old Town Elk Grove and just the businesses as a whole. We're going to have a whole other person, a whole other kind of business that's ever been there that's going to be, not only is he a business that's never been there, but from what I understand, this young man's one of the best in the nation, what he does. So I'm really excited. And again, everybody's already thanked you guys enough, and I know you guys are hearing it. But man, thank you so much for showing that you really care about our community and Old Town. And I think that you're gonna, you already have won a lot of people over, but I really believe that when people start to see this materialize and this town revitalize and this beautiful energy and this diversity comes together, I'm just, I'm very excited. And I want to thank the leaders, and you know who you are. And I just appreciate every one of you. And when I hear that excitement and that nervousness in John's voice and my son being so excited and talking, I just, I just thank you. And I thank this community because the whole reason I'm being able to talk to you is because of the people of Elk Grove. And Old Town Elk Grove has been very nice to my family and myself. I just, I thank you guys for what you're doing because this community, they deserve it. And so I'm going to quit talking. I'm watching the time. I've got 40, 39 seconds. Again, thank you guys very much for the great job that you do and the dedication that you show us to, at least to me. You showed at Elk Grove. And Darren, Darren Wilson, all you guys, man, you guys are all, man, we're lucky to have you. What a team. And I'm going to let you all go. God bless, man. Have a beautiful evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. Any other callers?
Angela Perry, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Nguyen, council members. I will be briefed. Angela Perry, Old Town Elk Grove Foundation. I had sent you all a letter when this item came before you before, and I just wanted to reiterate that the Old Town Foundation is in support of conditional use permits for this type of business. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other callers?
And at this point, I do not see any further raised hands on item 8.3, and that will conclude public comment on item 8.3.
All right, then I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed and open it up for council direction and comment.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to move the item. I hope Mr. Laurent gets lots of canvases coming into his shop and look forward to seeing how things go. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Laurent, I recall you saying that this was a dream for you and your brother. And so I am going to enthusiastically move this motion to a yes, and congratulations. And I look forward to swinging by.
Councilmember Spees?
I don't have any comments. I'm ready to support.
Councilmember Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I said last time this item came up, you know, back when the council heard this previously, I was in favor of expanding the types of uses down in Old Town. But I just want to pick up on something that the callers mentioned, and that was at the Railroad Street Plaza opening. I mean, you can feel the electricity in the air. People are anticipating Old Town really turning a corner and being a vibrant, more vibrant place to live, work, and play. And so I think this adds to that. I think everybody that's spoken favor of Mr. Laurent talks about what an amazing artist he is. I know that both generations of Alan Vitos are putting their heart and soul into the businesses down there. And so I enthusiastically support and look forward. I won't be presenting myself as a canvas personally.
Oh, come on now.
No, no, I've gone this far. It's too late now. But I just, I want to say I really think that this brings in a different clientele that will support Old Town businesses. We'll stop and Bob's get a drink. We'll go over to Dust Bowl and get something, whatever it is, and I just think it's about time. So thank you.
Here, here. I couldn't agree more. I enthusiastically support this as well. I've met Mr. Laurent. I've gotten to know the Vitos pretty well. This is just such a tremendous opportunity for Old Town, and we have great, great community leaders that are invested in our city, that have a love for our city. And this will go a long way towards revitalizing our Old Town, also known as our historic district. So I too enthusiastically support this. I believe I heard a motion and a second.
Yes.
Yeah.
But I would ask.
Yeah, we have a motion and a, from Mr. Sun and a second from Vice Mayor Nguyen.
I'm going to. The action under item 8.3, if I could ask for just a reading of that brief title for this ordinance.
Sure. I'll introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending the Old Town Special Planning Area for Tattoo and Piercing Studios.
Thank you, Councilmember Sun, and then that second would be from Vice Mayor Nguyen.
Yep, I still enthusiastically second it.
Excellent. And with that, we will move towards a roll call vote, and I'll be starting with Councilmember Spees.
Hi.
Councilmember Hume?
Hi.
Councilmember Sun?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Hi, thank you.
And the ordinance of item 8.3 will pass 5:00.
All right, excellent. Congratulations. We will move on to our next item.
That will take us on to item 8.4, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution of intent to amend the general plan and an ordinance amending Elk Grove Municipal Code for Consistency with the general plan. Evening again, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Christopher Jordan. This item before you, as Jason mentioned, is a series of proposed amendments to both the general plan and our municipal code, the majority of which occurs within our zoning code or Title 23 of the municipal code. There are a lot of amendments in here this evening. I will try to summarize them as efficiently as I can. But certainly, if you have questions and would like more details, we can run through those. Just a quick sort of overview in terms of why we are working on this. As you're aware, the general plan is the city's long-range planning document. It's our blueprint for future growth and identifies locations and the extent of land uses, including housing, retail, office, and industrial, through what we call a series of land use designations. The general plan is implemented by zoning. These are the specific development standards and permit requirements for things like conditional use permits, setback requirements, height limitations, parking requirements. To accomplish this, we divide the city into a series of zones. These are the RD5, LCG, CBLI, nomenclature you hear us talk about so frequently during development applications. And each of these land use designations is implemented by one or more zoning districts. By state law and our own regulations, zoning must be consistent with the general plan. So there's tables and materials within the general plan that describe the relationship between the general plan, land use designations, and zoning to create that sort of consistency. So on occasion, we need to make updates and changes in order to ensure that consistency continues. But before we get to that, there are two small general plan amendments that staff is proposing this evening. The first is at 8672 and 8688 Sheldon Road. This is the former location of the Elk Grove Racket Club. It's been closed since 2005. There was a lot split approved on it around that time that was approved by the city and subsequent subdivision was recorded. With the original general plan in 2003, though, the site was designated as private park facility. And 2019, we consolidated the public and private park designations into a single listing. So the site today is designated as park, but it's had a zoning designation of RD5. In 2019, concurrent with the adoption, the general plan are following it shortly thereafter. We did a rezone to that site to bring the designation, the zoning designation, consistent with the general plan. That's obviously not what the broader intent has been historically for this site with the existing RD5 and now the closure of the racket club. So staff's proposal this evening is to amend the general plan to low-density residential for the site. This is consistent with the surrounding properties on all four sides, and then a rezone to RD5, which is consistent with the adjoining subdivisions as well. The second amendment is for 8476 Sheldon Road. This is an existing residential care facility of 115 units on almost four and a half acres with a density of a little over 26 units per acre. The site was originally developed under the existing general plan designation of rural residential and the zoning district of AR5 due to a multifamily overlay that existed back then. We've reconfigured how the multifamily overlay works and how the site can ultimately move forward. So we are proposing this evening to amend the general plan here to high-density residential and a concurrent rezone to RD25, which would be consistent then with the built density condition. So fairly straightforward and minor revisions on the general plan we're proposing this evening. The next component is a series of rezones. We've tried to consolidate these as best we can, and we've done a couple of rounds of these since 2019 when the general plan was updated. The rezones before you this evening primarily focus on residential properties. These are sites that have a variety of issues with them in terms of the zoning that is either today relative to the general plan or zoning that we've inherited from the county. We've divided these up into four categories, and I'll walk through them briefly. Category one are the green areas, are locations where there's an inconsistency between the general plan and its long-term vision and the zoning district today. So you'll see most of these sites are on the east side of town. The larger green blobs or green areas are in estate residential general plan designations, meaning they allow for lot sizes between a quarter acre and one acre in size. And the appropriate zoning districts for those would be the AR1, RD1 through RD4. These sites currently have zonings of AR2 and AR5, which would be minimum two acres and five-acre lot sizes respectively. So staff is recommending to bring the zoning up into conformance with the general plan. The general plan designation for estate residential has existed since 2003 with the city's first general plan. And there were elements of that included in the county general plan prior to incorporation. So there's not a major change that's really happening here from a long-term plan perspective. Existing development in these areas does get grandfathered in, no changes in cell web, cell or, excuse me, well or septic requirements to existing development. It's only a future subdivisions were to occur. The yellow areas or the category two sites are places where, again, there's general plan and zoning inconsistency, but there's also an underlying existing condition that needs to be factored in. And you'll see most of these on the west side of town, and I'll highlight a couple of examples. The two islands that are in the Laguna West neighborhood, as well as a series of subdivisions sort of southeast of the Laguna Crossroad Shopping Center where Target is. These subdivisions have zoning that we inherited from the county. Typically, it's an RD20 zone, but they're built with single-family residential uses, more in the six to eight density per acre range. So here, the general plan carries the low-density designation, which is consistent with the built form, or bringing the residential down to it. This creates a consistency between the built form and the zoning. So if ever there was an issue that we could run into a non-conforming situation, like say, for instance, a setback requirement, we've now alleviated that concern. The third category, which is a single blue site over in the Sheldon Town Center area, this is the location of the existing vet office. We actually had included this site in a prior rezone effort. We'd gone back and forth with the property owner about including it or not. At one point, they were interested in not including it, and then we got to the Planning Commission meeting, and they were interested again. Unfortunately, the public noticing didn't allow for the Planning Commission or the council to move that forward. So at this point, staffs worked with the owner. They're interested in being part of this, and the site would go from an AR5 zone to a LC zone, which is consistent with the balance of the area. And then the fourth category are the two general, the two general plan amendment sites up on Sheldon we talked about a moment ago. So I'll move now to the text amendments. These occur both in Title 23, which is the zoning code, as well as other titles of the municipal code. So broadly, it's changes to the municipal code. To sort of walk through these and understand them, there's sort of five elements or reasons or drivers that we're looking at these modifications beyond just implementation of the general plan. So these include changes to state law, implementation of the general plan itself, some sort of prior council direction, opportunities to improve the accuracy and usability of the code, and then opportunities to provide flexibility that's consistent with the city's long-term vision. So to highlight these throughout the presentation, we're including these five symbols or iconography that are going to be up in the upper right-hand corner of each of the slide. We're also including the specific code sections below the red bar if you're interested in following along in the attachments in the staff report. The first one up to discuss are the parkland requirements. These are requirements for the dedication of new park sites in new developing areas of the city or requirement for collection of an in-lit payment for projects that aren't required to dedicate land because it wouldn't align with the city's general plan or the park's design principles or other sort of master plans for a given area. So right now, this is a code section we have in Title 22, which deals with subdivisions. We want to clarify some of the procedures there in terms of how the calculation process occurs and then update some of the provisions in there for multifamily projects that are part of a subdivision. We've had this come up in at least one instance recently where a single-family subdivision, actually, in two instances recently, where a single-family subdivision was occurring. They were carving off a block of land as part of that for a multifamily site, but it wasn't developing immediately. So these changes would clarify and update the timing of when the multifamily then has to pay its park in-lit components or would otherwise apply credits. So essentially, it's occurring a building permit. Separately, but in parallel with this, we're proposing a new code section in Title 16, which is where most of our fee programs occur. This would be a requirement for payment of an in-lit fee for new residential development that is not part of a subdivision. Predominantly, these would be multifamily developments. The case here is these projects are developing. They're bringing residents to the city, which increases the demand for park facilities in various areas and cumulatively around the community. So we want to make sure that these projects are contributing their fair share towards park land acquisition in conformance with the park's design principles and the general plan. So this requirement would then apply to new projects as they go to building permits for construction. Very similar to the process we use for subdivision projects where we would calculate it as each project comes forward based upon an appraisal. So we would do a calculation, eventually get to the number of acres required, get to a cost per acre, and that would end up being the fee. So there's no direct nexus study required as part of this. We would calculate it on a case-by-case basis. I will note, you did receive public correspondence on this on Friday, and I believe it was also circulated by the clerk's office on Monday from a multifamily developer with concerns about this. Staffs are able to answer questions if you have specific about that issue, but we believe it is appropriate and consistent with the city's general plan and objectives for parkland development to require this fee payment for these types of projects. I'll move next to the topic of temporary uses, which are those that occur for a limited duration and don't impose the same sort of long-term impacts as a permanent use. So for instance, this could be, say, a Christmas tree lot. It could be some sort of carnival or festival. At-home sales, such as garage sales, also good included in this. It's a circumstance where you have something occurring that is not part of the normal use of the business or establishment, but we would consider it to occur because, you know, there would be some sort of benefit or limited impacts to the surrounding area. We've had provisions for temporary uses and requiring temporary use permits going back beyond 2006. Staff's been keeping a running log since then of concerns and issues with the implementation of the procedures and the requirements. We're proposing this evening a comprehensive overall to this to address these structural issues with regulations. In the biggest form, we move from a set of standards that are based on time length to a set of standards that are based on the actual activity itself. So it's really restructuring around those concepts. Many of the procedures in terms of that there is a permit requirement for these types of uses, how those get approved, the ability to extend those permits, some of the fundamentals there remain the same. But we think it's going to provide a lot more streamlined and easier to. going to provide a lot more streamlined and easier to understand for customers down the line. Next is a return of a topic you gave direction on earlier this year for accessory structures. You directed earlier, I believe in January, February, that we should impose a minor designer review requirement for accessory structures in residential zones that are over, they're eight hundred square feet or larger. This is based upon prior concerns and issues that arose late last year for a couple of particular activities. As part of this, staff had also recommended new architectural requirements for accessory structures over one hundred and twenty square feet. So both of those are included this evening. As part of that, staff's also recommending some clarification for accessory structures that include kitchens. That those would be clearly designated as accessory dwelling units, which are special types of structures regulated under state law with very finite provisions and requirements the city has to implement. So we do draw a bright line difference between those types of structures. Also, as part of this and an implementation, staff's recommending updating the lot coverage limits and previous surface requirements for residential lots. These are included in the landscape provisions as well. Essentially, we're recommending pulling all of this out and moving to a lot coverage requirement or limitation that would exist in the development standards earlier in the code. We've done a lot of math on these. We've run it by the Building Industry Association for their review and comment relative to projects that are currently in construction or ones they would consider. We believe the standards are in alignment with existing practices and conditions. The next topic are allowed uses. We've got a series of amendments here. First off, in agricultural tourism, clarifying how exactly these are defined and permitted. And then in the rural combining zone, which is essentially an overlay that exists for the Sheldon Town Center area. We would specifically include this as an allowed use. We're also creating a new description for urban crop production, which I'll talk about later in the presentation. In the industrial sections, we're creating a new category for distribution logistics and delivery centers. Right now, these types of uses are essentially encumbered or included within warehouse and distribution facilities and wholesaling activities. So we want to pull those out and separately define them because that's really where the market has gone over the last fifteen years. There's also some changes to caretaker housing, mobile home parks, navigation housing, supportive housing and transitional housing for consistency with state law and the recently adopted housing element. We're recommending changes in manufacturing minor and small scale to allow more of these uses by right in the industrial zones as instead of requiring conditional use permits. Major manufacturing, which are the more resource intensive, more obnoxious sort of uses that may have things like odor and noise and light applications. Those would continue to require permit approvals. And then finally, personal storage facilities, we're recommending moving these to conditional use permit requirements in many zones. Staff had discussed particularly with economic development about removing them as an allowed use entirely from some of the commercial zones where they're allowed. We're not recommending that at this time because there were recent approvals to these projects in those zones. But once those projects are constructed, staff's going to recommend coming back and eliminating those from the commercial zones. These fit really more from a character perspective in industrial areas. But we do want to, staff is concerned about over concentration of these uses long-term over proliferation and reduction of industrial development opportunities around the city. In terms of the development standards we require for the different zones, we're recommending reductions in front and street yard setbacks for the RD twenty through the RD forty zones, essentially the multifamily residential zones going from twenty-five feet to fifteen feet. This would not apply to rear and interior side setbacks, particularly where you're adjacent to a single-family residential area. Those standards would stay the same. The driver for this is ensuring we have opportunities to achieve the density objectives that the housing element identifies for sites. So that we can achieve the unit productions that the housing element, the regional housing needs allocation call for the city over the upcoming planning period. We're also recommending these new lot coverage standards for the AG, AR and RD zones, as mentioned, the accessory structures discussion. We're updating a footnote for front yard setbacks in the RD one through RD seven zone to make it sort of easier to understand and follow and implement. And then in the height limits discussion for commercial mixed-use office and industrial, we want to clarify that the reduced setback requirement when adjacent to within a hundred feet of residential only applies to those portions of the building that are within the hundred feet distance and not to an entire building where only a portion of it may be within that distance. Similarly, we're recommending increases in the sep- in the height allowed in industrial zones and in the office zones. In the office zones, it would go up to ninety feet and in the industrial zones, we allow up to a hundred and twenty feet. Additional height in both those could be allowed through design review, which is a current allowance that exists. For the industrial zones, this would own, or for all of these cases, it would only apply to buildings or portions thereof that are more than are equal to five hundred feet from a residential zone. So you would not have a hundred and twenty foot tall structure adjacent to a single-family use as an example. We see these as opportunities in many of the industrial areas around town where they have that distance opportunity. We could allow for a variety of of industrial and manufacturing uses. Next up, one of everyone's favorite topics, fences. We're asking to clarify the setback standards along street side yards and you can see it illustrated in this graphic. On the right or excuse me, on the left are our existing graphics that define certain lot areas or yard areas on a lot. And the way those descriptions and illustrations provide, it could be interpreted that a twelve and a half foot side yard fence setback, or excuse me, the five-foot side yard setback fence setback from the sidewalk could actually be reduced once you get to what defines as the rear yard, which is that a sort of horizontal striped area at the back of the lot. We want to move to clarify the language such that the street side yard area extends the entire depth of lot less the front yard area. So as you can see in the graphic on the right. So essentially you don't end up with that stair stepping pattern that would happen with the fence. So the number of graphics and text that throughout the code get updated to reflect this change and clarification. And similarly, another favorite topic, RV parking. This is the same sort of change. We're also recommending some language change around compliance with applicable homeowners association regulations. Essentially, the language today could be interpreted as the city being on the hook or responsible for enforcement of those regulations, which is not the intent. So it would clarify that it's more of a guidance to property owners and residents to inquire what their HOAs is applicable and make sure they're consistent with those regulations. Next up are standards for flags. We're recommending for the commercial office and industrial zones, increasing the number of flag poles that are allowed from two to three and increase in the total flag area allowed up to seventy-two square feet from twenty-four square feet. This would also have a maximum size for a single flag of forty square feet. So the idea here is you could have an institution maybe has federal and state flag and maybe they also have say a corporate flag or maybe they want to put some other flag up. This would give them the ability to spread those flags out over all three poles as opposed to stacking one pole with two flags. Additionally, from the area perspective, we went back and looked at this to understand the relationship between the flag size versus the pole height and have updated those standards so they're in better alignment with sort of standard practice and convention. We're also recommending some updates to the illumination standards for flags. The existing code has some conflicts both internally with the illuminations chapter, but also with the US flag code. So we're recommending updated language around that. For accessory dwelling units, again, these are accessory structures on a residential property where there's a kitchen. So it's an opportunity for someone to live. There were standards at state law and state law highly regulates these uses in terms of what the cities can and cannot require and limit. Updates were occurred back in twenty nineteen that the city has adopted. There were further revisions last calendar year. So these revisions incorporate those most recent changes. Next up is crop production. This is a new use we're recommending. Our urban crop production, new use we're recommending adding. This would implement specific general plan action items and policies around promoting urban crop production. Essentially, this is the opportunity to take a maybe an undeveloped property or underutilized piece of property and have the opportunity to develop it or utilize it on an interim basis with some level of crop production. So it creates the opportunity for local in-community food growing and distribution, potential sale of the goods that are produced on the site. Because of the nature of the definition, we've divided this up into two subcategories. Those that are less than one acre and those that are one acre or more. We're recommending that those less than one acre be permitted by right because by virtue of the definition, any homeowner's backyard garden would be included in the definition of urban crop production because they are growing crops in an urban area. For those areas that are over one acre, one acre more in size, it would require a conditional use permit. And in both cases, a series of development standards would apply, governing equipment, maintenance and composting, sales, hours of operation and utility requirements. I will clarify that these provisions will not apply in the rural area. Those are separately defined as other crop uses. We would not allow urban crop production in that area because of how these are structured relative to the development standards and the acreage thresholds for the permitting requirements. So there's other forms of crop production that are permitted in the ag area and those areas would fall under those provisions. For our standards for wireless communication facilities, there was a state law last year, AB twenty-four twenty-one, which provides first streamlined permitting and reviewing for standby generators for large facilities. These are the large wireless arrays that you would see maybe at a fire station or at a park facility sort of around town that are, is not the, the small facilities or the mini facilities that we've, we've talked so much about over the last few years. By state law, these would be exempt from use permit and design review requirements. We're also recommending changes to the language around co-location so that it would not limit it, limit it to a multiple providers. You could have one provider with two different sets of arrays that are stacked or co-located at the location. Our current definition requires those, each array to be maintained by a different carrier or service provider. We also have changes to the yard descriptions and graphics. I won't go through them in detail here, but these dovetail in with the changes on the accessory or excuse me, with the RV parking and the fence standards. There's a variety of other changes I didn't highlight in detail this evening, but are in your staff report. If there's questions about these, I can come back and, and answer and address them specifically. But some clarification around responsibilities of the council and commission for planning matters. State law around religious institution, housing, development, parking requirements, determination or official interpretations of the code and similar use determinations and how those would occur. Clarification of some procedures around minor deviations. There was some additional language change at the state level around density bonus. That language has been incorporated. And then we're also recommending increasing the number of seat, outdoor seating that is allowed by right in retail developments before a minor design review is required. The last change to highlight is in the southeast policy area. This is increasing the allowed height in, for the office park building type consistent with what we're proposing in the BP zone. Moving to environmental review, staff's reviewed this and all the proposed revisions are consistent with the analysis provided in the general plan environmental impact report that the council certified in twenty nineteen and no further environmental reviews required pursuant to state guidelines. So the recommendation for you this evening from both staff and the planning commission is to move forward with the amendments as proposed. Planning commission reviewed this in early June and voted five to zero to recommend approval. That concludes my presentation. Available to answer questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you for that presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
So for our attendees in the Zoom environment, if they wish to sign up for public comment on item eight point four, now is that opportunity to use the raise hand function in order to queue yourself into the speaker queue. Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, we did have one written comment as Mr. Jordan mentioned that was circulated to the full city council and staff prior to the meeting. And as I look over at our list of attendees, I see some familiar names, but I'm, I don't think anyone is using the raise hand function, which will mean for item eight point four will be concluding the public comment on item eight point four.
Okay, then I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is now closed. I do have a couple of questions before I move on to our council other comments and deliberations. As it relates to the, the written testimony or the, the letter that came in for eight point four, it was related to the parkland requirements. So I just want to talk about that just a little bit. So it's my understanding from our city manager, there's a few things here that I want to raise. This is not a new fee, correct?
So correct, well, we do have an existing fee requirement for residential. There is sort of a gap in the way the regulations are structured right now relative to residential. It's not part of a subdivision. So this addresses that and ensures that all residential development pays its fair share.
Correct. Okay. And then, so this proposing of this new code system is applying that sort of that equity lens that all residential projects obviously will benefit from having these new parks.
Correct.
And I think one of the last, let's see, my notes here. I just, I've just noted here, obviously, that the collection of the fees important in meeting our city's park land standards. And without these funds, the city as well as the CCSD, it would, it would raise some concerns primarily not being able to reimburse single-family developers for over dedication. The second point that I saw was directly acquiring new park sites, adding financial liability to the city and CSD through the general fund. Yeah, a reduction in parkland and then last, the overall quality of life would be negatively impacted. So I bring that up because we did have the one letter that came in and since they didn't dial in, I thought it was important to at least address some of those components because we did get a response, but the public may not be aware of those nuances as it relates to parkland requirements.
Mayor, I do see a hand up. I don't know if it came in after or before you.
Oh, okay. I don't, I'll leave that up to the city clerk.
And sorry for that. We're trying to coordinate a speaker for the next item. We do have Mr. Thad Johnson raised his hand just as we kind of concluded the public comment. So if the mayor and council, if you'd like to entertain hearing comments for Mr. Johnson, we can pull him in.
Absolutely.
And we'll pull up that speaker timer.
Thad Johnson, you may go ahead. You have three minutes. Thad, if you're talking, we can't hear you speaking. Thad, you show unmuted on our side, but we're not hearing you.
Thank you.
Okay. So, sorry, I had my Bluetooth. Good evening, Mayor Singh, members of the council, Thad Johnson. Call up on the letter submitted by Pacific Companies, Mike Kelly, specifically regarding affordable housing project posed in the city of Elk Grove.
We lost you again, Thad. We can't hear you.
Can you, can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure why it's breaking out or in. Mayor Singh, we, we purchased a property, got a fee quote for the property and it's an affordable housing project, which we've submitted a significant amount of time and resources on based in reliance on, on the fee quote we gave. The introduction of this fee at this time, which would not otherwise be applicable to this property represents a million plus dollar additional fee hit to the property that was not previously anticipated in any cost formulations for the project. It's a new fee for this property. This fee property would not otherwise be subject to this fee. I certainly understand the, the rationale for introducing this in, into the code, but we'd request that a project such as ours that has been acquired and an application has been submitted and the affordable house.
We lost you again. We lost you after affordable housing.
Mayor, I don't see him anymore in Zoom. I think he may have lost his connection altogether.
Okay, on my end, I see a hand raised though.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
While we work to get Mr. Johnson back on, I can provide a little bit of insight into this as well.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we discussed this this morning and certainly appreciate, understand the specific companies concerns with the the fee and their pro forma, et cetera. And so I think what what we've discussed was kind of revisiting the financing of that project specifically with affordable housing funds. And seeing how the city might be able to assist in getting that project built and and including this fee and that in that project. And so we're committed to doing that. To bring that back in that process would go back through the affordable housing committee and then and then ultimately back to the city council. So we think that's the the right and equitable thing to do.
Yeah.
I think to move forward with this with this fee, but also recognizing the investment and the issue and the representations that were made with this project previously. We want to make sure we respect and honor that.
Okay, so seeing that Mr. Johnson's not on the line right now. Did you have conversation with with him as well?
Yes.
Okay, and so notwithstanding that he's going to join us back, does that address the concerns that Mr. Johnson raised?
Yes, my understanding from our conversations this this morning is he just wanted assurance that 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 additional fee was not going to create a burden or make the project infeasible to develop. And what I what I relayed to him is that we would certainly work with him and 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 the applicant team to make sure that we can move forward with the development of that project and this additional fee would 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 not become a burden and we could use affordable housing funds to address that issue.
Okay, very good. I had so great. I had some of those same concerns. I wanted to make sure that those were addressed. And it sounds like you had those conversations, so I'm good with that. I will go ahead and if Mr. Johnson does come back, let us know. I will move on to council members soon.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I I just wanted to follow up, Jason. I I appreciate that comment. You know, I think as much as it's it's the fee is warranted. We need to we need to capture those types of projects. We also want to make sure we have a predictable process for for businesses. I think our city's prided itself on on being able to do that for for businesses. I just wanted to clarify, are we, do we need to develop a path forward, a specific path forward tonight on that on that project? Or is that something that we can work out through the affordable housing process?
Yeah, there's nothing that you can really do tonight, I think, other than give us direction to make sure that we we incorporate that as part of our discussions through the affordable housing committee as far as the the loan. You know, process and the amounts to make sure that that fee is reflected and covered in whatever agreements we come to with them or any amendments that need to be taken care of.
Okay, so the the solution we can work out later as far as this specific project.
You give us direction that that's your intent, then we'll make sure that we address that.
Okay, thank you very much.
No, I certainly would support that. We'll go to council member, let's see, Spees.
Well, now that's resolved. I didn't have I didn't have any more questions relative to that.
Council member Hugh.
No comments. I'd spoken offline with the city manager prior to this.
Very good. I thought I saw Mr. Johnson come back. Something just popped up on my screen for a second.
That's the caller for the next item, Mayor. I don't see this. Oh, sorry, I do.
We do. I think, yeah, we actually had a few folks bounce in. And so I think what will, I think the caller is for our next item. But Mr. Johnson, if we can see if we can make that connection with them.
Ah, you get to continue where you left off. That's great.
There there's no connection. If you can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, sorry, I don't know why.
I think we lost you again.
Hold on, yeah. Mr. Johnson, if you can hear me, part of what might help is if you're using a speakerphone function, you may want to turn that off and just use your direct the headpiece and mouthpiece if you're on a phone. Or mute any other devices that are around you because we're getting a lot of interference or you may be in a location that it's difficult for us to make connection with you.
Jason, I'm I know I'm going to sign off. I'm outside and it's it's just me without any other interference. I'm not sure what the what the issue is. I'm sure it's on my end, though.
We can hear you right now.
Every time I, okay. My understanding is my our my concerns may have been discussed and addressed while while I was offline. If that's the case, I won't take any more of the council's time. But but we do have a serious concern if about the potential application of this fee to the project without some source money through the housing program. And if you'd like me to elaborate, I'd be glad to do so, but if there's been a discussion occurred while I was off.
I, yes, Mr. Johnson, you're fading away again. So, yes, Mr. Berman did chime in and provided clarity for all of us and believe you had a good conversation. So we're in a good place is is my understanding. So it should address some of the issues that you raised.
Thank you very thing. I'll follow up with the city manager.
Very good. Yeah, thank you. Were there any others on this? I don't think there were, so. All right. We've heard, I believe, Vice Mayor Wen. We haven't heard from her yet.
No, I have nothing to add. I had my briefing with our city manager right before this meeting and was updating this item. Thank you.
All right, very good. Any concluding thoughts, Mr. Berman?
Nope, none for me. Thank you.
All right, very good. Then can we get a motion?
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Do we need to read this one?
That would be if you are just moving the resolution, we can move ahead with that. But if you also want to combine the motion to include both motions, one and two, I would just ask to for the motioner to read in the title of the ordinance.
I'm sorry.
The easiest way is if we take the first resolution and vote on that, and then we can move the next item can be the ordinance.
Perfect. How we always do it. Great.
So with that, we have a motion and a second for motion one of the staff recommendation, which is the adoption of the resolution of intent. And with that, I will start the roll call vote with Councilmember Spees.
Hi.
Councilmember Hugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Sue.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The resolution of motion one under item eight point four will pass five oh, and then on the table is the ordinance that's motion number two.
Introduced and waived the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance adopting amendments to the Elk Grove Municipal Code Title sixteen twenty two and twenty three zoning code. Rezoning certain parcels and amending the southeast policy area special planning area for consistency with the general plan adopted on February twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen. General Plan Zoning Consistency Program Phase Three File Number PL zero zero two two.
Second.
And with the motion and the second, I will commence with the roll call vote for the motion number two under item eight point four, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Hi.
Councilmember Hugh.
Hi.
Councilmember Sue.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Wen.
Hi.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Hi.
The ordinance of motion two under item eight point four will pass five oh.
All right, very good. Uh, next item, please.
They'll take us on to item eight point five, which is a public hearing to consider a resolution approving Republic Services' report of delinquent solid waste and storm drain utility charges and proposing their collection on the Sacramento County tax roll. I can. I was just trying to unmute myself, but your presentation's up and everything looks ready to go. You're in the presentation mode. Please proceed.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Jamie Vandy, Revenue Manager. I'm here this evening to present the report of delinquent utilities. Some quick background, the city contracts with Republic Services to provide our solid waste and storm drain utility billing. The accounts listed tonight on the proposed tax levy are those accounts that are delinquent with Republic Services for charges that have incurred before May first of this year, and they have remained unpaid for at least one hundred and twenty days. The city has you historically utilized the county tax roll to recover costs that have already been incurred. Republic Services has continued this process with the city's assistance. On June twenty fourth of this year, roughly twenty five hundred account holders were notified of tonight's public hearing. The total dollar amount of delinquent charges this year was just under one point one million dollars. You'll see on your screen the breakdown between the solid waste and the storm drain charges. Solid waste was just under twenty five hundred account holders representing about eight hundred and ninety six thousand dollars. Storm drain had roughly twenty two hundred accounts representing about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. I did want to note tonight that this year's total number of account holders is actually about fifteen percent less than it was last year. And actually twenty five percent less than it was two years ago. And then to further note, some updated numbers that are received from Republic Services today. It looks like there's actually been quite a few payments that have been made and accounts that have been been brought current since these notices went out. So for solid waste, we're actually down to about sixteen hundred account holders representing about seven hundred and twenty three thousand dollars in delinquent charges. And storm drain, it looks like it's just under seventeen hundred account holders. And that delinquent amount has dropped down to about a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. So it looks like there's been some pretty good progress there. Customers do still have until July thirtieth to bring their accounts current, and anybody who does so will be removed from the report and not submitted to the county for collection. I'm available for any questions this evening, and we do also have a representative from Republic Services available as well.
All right, Mayor, if there's no, nobody signed up for public comment, I'd be willing to move the item.
All right, let me just declare the public hearing is open and open the public comment opportunity.
And for our attendees in the audience, if they do wish to speak on this item, you can use the raise hand function. I do know that one of our phone callers that we have that has pulled into the meeting does wish to speak on this item. The same phone caller also submitted a written comment prior to the meeting. And that was distributed to the full city council and staff. But I believe we're going to start with our phone caller, Ms. Betty Greer, and pull her into the speaking environment so that she can unmute her phone and provide her comments, but also pull up that three minute speaker timer. And as Ms. Greer is on a phone, what I will be doing is hopefully Ms. Greer will hear me and we can make a confirmation, but I will sound a bell that will sound once after two minutes of pass of the speaking time. And then as we conclude and we get to the end of the three minute speaking time, then there will be a series of bells that will sound. But we should see if we can first make that connection. I think staff's working on unmuting the phone for Ms. Greer. And Ms. Greer, on your end, you might just have to unmute your phone. You might have to hit a button on your phone, Ms. Greer, in order to activate your phone to be able to talk in the environment. And then I just see from staff, if we can, can we make the move to promoter status and then we might be able to unmute it from our side? Is that possible?
When it's on the phone, we are not able to promote to a panelist. It should be prompting to give the button to push to unmute to the caller.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So Ms. Greer, if you are listening in, your phone should be giving you a prompt to either dial press in a number sequence or to hit a button on your phone in order to unmute. And for any of our other attendees in the Zoom environment, if you do wish to speak on this item, using that raise hand function is the way for us to pull you into the queue as we might jump to someone else if we have the opportunity until we can get Ms. Greer unmuted. And I would like to touch base with staff. Do we have an option to do a dial direct to Ms. Greer? I know that this is a this methodology may not be working.
Jason, if you can just give me a moment, I'm gonna try a landline and see if I can get through to her. I'm not sure if she'll hear me since she's on the phone already, but I'll give it a shot.
And I think we also had a secondary phone for her, but that might get more complicated.
I'll try right now.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, if you'll indulge staff a little bit. Ms. Greer is elderly and we're trying to get her into this environment in order to provide her comments. And we're just trying out a few different options in order to try to make the connection. Unfortunately, I think we're finding the the method of connecting is is proving to be a little bit difficult.
No worries. We can exhaust all efforts here to connect. That's great.
And hopefully, Ms. Greer, if you can hear us from your side, what's happening is our staff's going to try and call you direct via your phone. And right now, what we're finding is this Zoom environment call does not seem to be working. You may want to hang up from this the Zoom meeting environment so that you can receive a direct call from our staff. So I think she's listening in on us because I just saw her disappear off of the off of our attendee list. And I can hear our staff making the connection. It's just there's a little bit of techno wizardry that occurs in order to mute devices appropriately so that we can pull someone into the speaking environment. Thank you everyone for your patience. We're really close. I think we almost have Ms. Greer on the line.
Ms. Greer, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
I'm the Honorable Mayor and City Council Members of the City of Elk Grove. I want to thank you, number one, for allowing me to participate this evening on this hearing. I'm not, I've not had an opportunity to review the a report that you've been regarding the outstanding delinquent utility balance services rendered to the sixty eight thirteen Tiago property that was incurred before May first, twenty twenty one. But I do know that the public services from Rancho Cudova has delivered no services to that vacant property since all of the previous occupants moved out around November twenty second, twenty nineteen. The vacant property since then has been under repair. And the tenants have moved out. They moved out June twenty second, I think, in twenty nineteen. And I just had new tenants move in on June one, twenty one. You might note that when I took over the property sixty eight thirteen, somebody on the Sacramento staff or the Elk Grove staff took my identity information from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, established an account in my name and started charging me for delinquent charges deals that are not mine. I've never, never, never filled out an application or signed a contract for the Republic Services Utilities for that house. The property was being repaired for damages created by vandalists. But the contractors and handyman, they cleaned up the service after themselves. And I personally bagged black bags full of yard waste myself and brought it down to the Contra Costa disposal services or either I took it to my own house here in Concord. And when I took out over the house and trust fee for my Betty J. Greer trust, I paid lots of money for property taxes that wasn't mine. Home repairs and delinquent charges that the republic placed on my property taxes deal for two years straight without my knowing it and without due process. I asked for documents. I never got them. I, as far as the owing for sweeping up and cleaning the streets and the curbs, I had to do that myself by my house. And my house was the only one that had a lot of weeds and things left around. But every two weeks I would come down and I would sweep up some of the
Ma'am, your, ma'am, your time is up now.
From the drains.
No.
Mrs. Greer.
Cleaned in that area myself.
Your, your three minutes are up, Mrs. Greer.
I'll answer. Am I three minutes yet?
Yes, we've reached.
Well, I, I, I reject the I, I, I reject the Republic people charging me for something I don't know anything about. And I have no knowledge of the report.
Thank you, ma'am.
To the city council, so I hope the city council will be fair to me as well as the Republic people women make their decision as to what to do.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, your time is up. Duly noted. Your comments are duly noted. Thank you.
And thank you for everyone's patience for us patching through the speaker. And then looking over on our list of participants, attendees in the Zoom environment, I don't see any additional raised hands. And just one more check as I'm kind of looking through our systems. That would be the conclusion of our speakers on item eight point five.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing is closed. And open it up for council direction.
Mayor, this is Hume. My motion still stands.
Yep, we have a motion.
Again, again.
With the motion and the second, I will be moving to the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye, aye, aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye. We're getting out the background like an echo.
That probably is me. I have a tendency to create an echo with all the devices that I have around me. The resolution of item eight point five will pass five oh.
Thank you. Yep, it looks like it's gone. All right, with that, we'll move on to our next item.
And that'll take us to item eight point six, which is actually three public hearings for the sixty-eighth annexation of Community Facilities District two thousand six dash one for Maintenance Services, the forty-second annexation to Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two, and the forty-third annexation to the same Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two.
Jason.
I can. Your audio is a little bit odd. So whatever you can do, if you can reduce down using any kind of speaker functions or perhaps do some adjustments for your audio, it's kind of squelching out actually on your side.
Is that any better?
That is. Please proceed. We'll let you know if it, if it, if there's any issues.
Okay, appreciate that. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city here with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax district. As you know, the city maintains eight special tax districts which provide funding for infrastructure or for services such as for police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically a part of a project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. Special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On June ninth, twenty twenty-one, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex the parcels for the Green Space Project and for the Laguna West Plaza Project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearing. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following special tax districts. CFD two thousand six dash one for maintenance services throughout the city and Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two for Stormwater Drainage and runoff maintenance services. This is the sixty-eighth annexation into CFD two thousand six dash one and the forty-second and forty-third annexations into Stormwater Drainage Fee Zone Two. Both of these assessments will be levied in perpetuity. A little bit more specifics about the projects. The first project is Green Space. The project consists of three non-residential acres located northeast of Elk Grove Boulevard and Highway ninety-nine, which will be for a self-storage facility. And then Laguna West Plaza Pads one and two is the second project proposed for annexation. The project consists of about one and a half non-residential acres located southeast of Laguna Boulevard and I five, which will be for a shopping plaza. This project's parcels were annexed into CFD two thousand six dash one Maintenance Services previously in two thousand eight. So we are not re-annexing them. And this concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you for your timing consideration.
All right, thank you for that. I will declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And in a similar pattern for these three public hearings under item eight point six, no written comments were received under these items. And I'm looking towards the Zoom crowd to see if they have any raised hand functions. But I do not see any names look familiar with the applicant for this process. So with no raised hands, that will conclude the public comment and we'll probably go through the public comments pretty quickly on the other two.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for CFD two zero zero six dash one is closed. And if I can get a motion on A one.
Motion A one.
Second.
The motion and the second on motion A one, I will start with the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The resolution will pass five oh.
All right, can I request the results of the ballot tabulation?
Indeed, of three possible votes, three affirmative votes were cast authorizing the City of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
All right, thank you. Motion for A two.
Motion A two.
We have a motion in a second.
That roll call vote will start with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Five oh, that resolution will pass.
And a motion for A three. Which looks like you need to read it out.
Motion A three, introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annex to Community Facilities District number two thousand six dash one Maintenance Services, Annexation Number sixty-eight and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code Section three point one nine point zero one zero.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second.
We'll move to the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
The ordinance of motion A three will pass five oh.
All right, we have our second public hearing for SWDF Zone Two Annex forty-two. I will declare the public hearing for SWDF Annex forty-two now open and open the public comment opportunity.
Again, no written comments, and as I'm viewing the list of attendees, there are no hands raised. So for the second public hearing under eight point six, that concludes comments.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that public hearing for SWDF Annex forty-two is closed. And I request the clerk to provide results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of three possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for each property. Three affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcel identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Thank you. Can I get a motion B?
Motion B.
Motion B, second.
We have a motion in a second.
And the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion B will pass five oh.
All right, next item is the third public hearing for SWDF Zone Two Annex forty-three. I will declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex forty-three is now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And again, no written comments, and I see no attendees with a raised hand function. That will conclude public comments for the third public hearing of item eight point six.
All right, I will close the public comment opportunity and declare that the public hearing for SWDF Annex forty-three is now closed and request the clerk to provide results of the ballot tabulation.
And again, there is no majority protest of two possible votes weighted according to the proportional financial obligation for each property. Two affirmative votes were returned. The ballot approves the proposed assessment and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballot. Resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
All right, we have a motion C.
Move motion C.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second.
And the roll call vote for motion C, starting with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume.
Aye.
Councilmember Sue.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
Resolution of motion C of item eight point six will pass five oh.
All right, thank you. On to our next item.
It'll take us to section nine, our regular agenda action items and recommendations. And the one item under this section is nine point one, which is consider funding allocations for American Rescue Plan Act revenues. Receive public input and provide direction to staff.
Good evening again. My privilege is Jason Barham, City Manager. My privilege to be able to present this item to you this evening. And what I recognize the collective efforts of a lot of people in, in getting this to where it is now. Staff, council members, community members, and what you're seeing, which you're gonna be presented with tonight. So let me go ahead and see if I can share my screen. All right. Jason, we're good to go?
Please proceed. We have audio and visual. All looks good.
Excellent. So I'm gonna be presenting the information regarding the American Rescue Plan Act and recommendations relating to how the city allocate the funds. At the end of the, the presentation, the recommendation is the council receive the information and then receive public input, provide direction to staff on the recommendations. So just before I get into the Rescue Act numbers, I wanted to just provide a brief snapshot of the city's investment and involvement throughout the entire COVID pandemic and providing funds back into the community. A lot of these funds came from federal, state, other assistance programs, but a lot of staff work and effort went into making these programs happen. And we're really, I'm proud of the efforts that have gone in and the council's support and, and direction, making sure that funds that were available get into the hands of those most in need in our community. So starting on the left is just the list of about two point seven million dollars worth of business support that flowed directly from the City of Elk Grove, including the lift investing, emergency investment relief program, small business recovery grant program, rapid response hub, our dying local campaign, our shop local campaign and the business mass distributions. And then as far as money back into the community, our Great Plates Delivered Program, which was a tremendous success, homeless support, nonprofit funding support, eviction, utility disconnection and utility assistance. A lot of work and effort and funding that went into much needed recovery efforts. But this is a new opportunity for us. Also, I wanted to just give a brief background, not only about the allocations that you're gonna be asked to give some direction on tonight, but the larger package that was approved by Congress and voted on or signed by the president earlier this year. So it's a one point nine trillion dollar package, provides a lot of different benefits to a lot of different entities, starting with fourteen hundred dollars in direct payments to individuals, expanding the unemployment benefits with the weekly three hundred dollar supplement through September sixth of this year, expanding the child tax credit, expanding the earned income tax credit, grants directly to small businesses or including things such as the Restaurant Revitalization Fund and the Paycheck Protection Program and others. Provides direct funding through education for K through twelve schools. Writes funding for housing, rent assistance, mortgage assistance, homelessness and others. And money for COVID funding for testing, healthcare vaccination distribute, distribution, et cetera. So it's a very large pack package, and this is, this is some of the programs outside of the money that's going directly to the city. So this is just a brief statement about the funding that is going to local governments and state agencies. So the plan provides needed relief to state, local and tribal governments to enable them to continue to support the public health response and lay the foundation for a strong equitable economic recovery. In addition to helping governments address the revenue losses they have experienced as a result of the crisis, it will help to cover the costs incurred responding to the public health emergency and provide support for recovery. So as relating to the funding provided to the city, this is kind of an overarching statement of the goals of that relief and that funding program. So specifically, the Rescue Plan provides three hundred and fifty billion dollars in emergency funding for state, local, territorial and tribal governments who address the impact of the pandemic on government services. This includes a hundred and thirty billion dollars to local government for the following major categories. Support public health expenditures, address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency, including economic harm to workers, households, small businesses, impacted industries and the public sector, replace lost public sector revenue and providing premium pay for essential workers and investing in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure. Those are all eligible categories for the funding that's provided to local governments. So the city specifically is scheduled to receive total of almost twenty-two million dollars over a two-year period. We received our first installment this last month of ten point nine million dollars. We expect to receive the second equal payment in June of next year. So I wanted to talk a little bit about the processes, how we went about deciding and determining recommendations to present back to the city council about how we allocate these funds within those broad categories, things that were really priorities for the Elk Grove community. So starting with the Economic Recovery Task Force, it was established early this year by action of the city council. It's something that mayor brought forward. Happy to, and we had Mayor Singh Allen and Councilmember Sue that sat on that as well as staff members. And it was chaired by Angela Spees and Angela Perry, Chamber of Commerce involvement, local business owners, nonprofit leaders, et cetera. So great, great team. They made a number of recommendations back to the city council, and those were, those were certainly strongly considered in the recommendations that we're presenting to you this evening, and then I'll go over and create a detail in a minute. The other thing that we did is what we wanted to get some broad community input, and so we did a community survey. We put it out on social media, we put it on the website, we sent out direct, direct emails and a lot of other ways to try to get broad participation. We had a good response as far as these things go. I'll go through just some highlights of the survey. So the survey was available for several weeks from June twenty-second through July eleventh, that we made it available in multiple languages. We received three hundred and sixty-eight survey responses from Elk Grove residents. It is important to point out, it's not a scientific survey, meaning it wasn't a random sample of households. It was, individuals could self-select whether they chose to respond to, to the survey. So it's not necessarily reflective of all of the residents in our community the way a random survey would be. But the information that we received is still important, and we use the information in developing the recommendations that we're making to you this evening, City Council. So at the bottom, it has a description of kind of who responded in the different categories. Both, and you can see on the right, the age predominantly was in the thirty to forty-nine-year-old category. Over half was in the nine, five, six, two, four. We had about a quarter each in the nine, five, seven, five, eight and nine, five, seven, five, seven zip codes. And it was pretty equally distributed between male and female, a little bit more on the female side. So a pretty good reflection of our community. As far as the results go, it was, it was a few things to note. First of all, the largest pie or the largest, largest amount of money is about $3.5 million. Residents said should go to local government services, city, city and CSD related services, police, fire, other community services. Then there was these other categories, nonprofit grant program, economic development, small business grant program, broadband for business workforce development, flexible homeless solutions. They're all pretty evenly distributed between the $2 million and $2.5 million range with broadband business less than that. That was the smallest one, it's slightly over a million dollars. And so what you're going to see in some of the recommendations, certainly reflective of information and input we received through the survey and information we received for the task force as well as discussions at the staff level. So now I'll get into the, the recommendations. Again, we tried to be as equitable as we could, spreading the funds out to hit the, the biggest needs. Also reflective of the input we received for all these, these means that I just mentioned. And, and so starting the first one, which is government support. Again, this was reflective in the community survey is the highest priority among those responding to the survey. And what we, we've allocated approximately 27% of the total funds, about almost $6 million between the city of Elk Grove and the community, Kasunus Community Services District. Let me explain that to you a little bit. First, starting with the, the city of Elk Grove. The, the, the funds is divided between two different fiscal years. So the first tranche, 1.5 and then $2 million next year for the city and 1.2 and 1.25. And the, a lot of these, these, these numbers are based on the revenue loss of the agencies as well as the COVID-related expenses. And so one of the, the primary use of the funds again is to support local government services due to revenue losses like hotel taxes, facility use taxes, rentals and unreimbursed COVID-19 related expenses. And so staff recommends that funds allocated to the city as part of the program go to restore some, some of the lost revenue, pay for unreimbursed pandemic related expenses and support other critical city services. As far as the CSD is concerned, the CSD did not receive a direct allocation from the federal government. But there's language in, in, in the law that allows cities, counties and state governments to allocate some of their funding to other units of government. And so that is, is our recommendation. The CSD obviously provides important services to our community, fire, emergency medical parks and recreation. And so we feel it's appropriate to allocate a portion of the city's funds to assist with the Kasunus Community Services District with their loss and revenue as well as their unreimbursed expenses. So some of the things that, that, that they related to us is assistance in funding repair and replacement of apparatus, equipment and infrastructure was deferred due to reductions in revenues increases and expenditures due to COVID-19. What I'd also like to point out is, you know, we're allocating or we're recommending an allocation of approximately 27% total for government support. And this reflects really just a fraction of the total revenue loss and expenses of the city and the CSD. But we feel that there are a lot of other priorities in the community, including businesses and nonprofits and other things that you'll see in a minute. And so we wanted to make sure that we spread the funds out as much as possible. And again, to try to reflect the results of that survey. So the next category of allocations is what we call business support. So starting with that business broadband, this is a, a category is, you know, I've been on business walks in the past with the Chamber of Commerce. One of the items that's come up in different parts of the city, particularly some of our industrial business parks is the poor speed of internet in those areas. And one of the eligible allocations for infrastructure is to improve broadband service where it's underserved. And we have areas in the city that qualify for that. And so we think an allocation of that would really be a boon and a support for some of our, our local businesses. The other category that we're recommending is, is what we call economic development. And this is infrastructure related. Council and community are aware of the city recently annexed close to 400 acres just south of Grant Line. There's a lot of infrastructure needs down there in order to really make that development ready for all of the different parcels and projects that we anticipate we'd like to bring into our, our community. Creating jobs has always been or been for many years, a high priority of the city council and, and, and continuing to improve our jobs housing balance. And so economic development, providing some funds for needed infrastructure like water, sewer, storm drain facilities that also accomplishes the goal of helping with job creation and business support, we think is a worthwhile endeavor. And again, that also generated good community support. At the same, and, and that money would be in, in year two. Because of these next two, we have fully allocated in the first year because of really the, the priorities there. The first one is from our, our small business grant program. And again, this was a recommendation of the task force. And one of the things you'll note, one of the, the letters we received from the, the task force was a recommendation that majority of the funds go towards supporting businesses. And you'll see here under this business support, there's a total of 55%. So just over half is, is allocated towards this category. But specifically for the small business grants, these will be funds that would be allocated directly to local businesses here in, in Elk Grove and local small businesses, regardless of whether or not they've received funding in the past. Cause we recognize that a lot of businesses have received some funding through the various rounds that have been there. But in many cases, it's not enough. And so if we can provide some additional funds to support a variety of different expenses and, and as the Delta variant spreads and as things start to, to get stricter again and match requirements start to come back, we know that there, there's going to be continued impacts on our local small businesses. So we're have to be able to allocate a significant portion of the funds towards this grant program. And, and of course, our nonprofits are also businesses. And so when you combine the small business grants with the nonprofit grants, it's about almost 30% of the, of the total allocation. And some of the things, and some of the things that we envision that the small businesses would benefit from relating to this as far as how they might spend the funds are things such as, you know, retiring debt, paying fixed costs for the utilities, paying rent, rehiring employees, buying startup inventory, relaunching businesses where necessary, a variety of different broad flexibility and how the, the businesses spend those funds. And for our nonprofit partners, they've suffered because they haven't been able to have fundraisers in many cases. Many cases, their service demands have increased significantly, especially if you consider businesses or nonprofits like Food Bank and, and the needs that have risen over the last year and a half. So we're excited to be able to continue to support them through some additional funding. So our recommendation is again, as you see in front of you right here. The final category is what we call disadvantaged community support. And those are kind of those individuals kind of most in need in, in the community. And so the first one, we call our flexible homeless solutions. And this is a kind of a hodgepodge or a variety of different things that we may be able to employ that could address some of the homeless issues within our community. So things, you know, things such as providing incentives to help people maintain clean encampments, assistance resolving legal or credit issues that prevent people from attaining housing, additional navigation and/or case management, motel vouchers or other strategies such as permanent supportive housing. City may also collaborate with Sacramento Steps Four on the Rapid Access Problem Solving Program, which acts to prevent people from becoming homeless or get them, just as they're becoming homeless, to get them back into housing quickly. So a variety of different solutions, the money would be spread out over the two years that we think could really make a dent in addressing some of those challenges within our community. And the final category is what we call our workforce development job training. Many people become out of work or underemployed during the pandemic. So this is kind of a reskilling, retooling, variety of different ways of providing the support needed to our workforce here in Elk Grove. And these would be, again, those people that are in need or suffered during the pandemic. And we're hoping to kind of get them back on their feet, get them, get them retrained, re-skilled, re-enter the workforce. So we're excited about this one. We anticipate partnering with hopefully several workforce development nonprofits or organizations that specialize in this work. We certainly don't have expertise at the, at the staff level. We're looking to create a process that identifies those, those agencies that are best suited to provide those types of programs within our community. So about $2 million for each of those for a total of $4 million. So those are the, those are staff's recommendations. What the, the next steps or the process we would suggest is for the council to ask any questions that you might have of, of staff. We have other staff that kind of specialize in these different program areas available to ask, answer any specific questions that you might have. Then to receive public comment, I do want to mention that we did receive one letter from the Elk Grove Water District with the request to allocate some of the funds for water-related infrastructure within the city of Elk Grove. And as I noted previously, water infrastructure is an eligible expense. So the council may wish to, to consider that request. And then, and then finally, we, as once the public comment period is closed, we ask the council to deliberate and discuss. And if the council would like to make any modifications to the draft expenditure plan, we certainly welcome that. We're looking for your input. And based on that input, but we will come back in August with a final expenditure plan and, and a budget amendment for your adoption. So with that, I will turn it to, back to the city council to proceed to the next steps.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bearman. I will now open up the public comment opportunity.
And this will be the opportunity under item nine point one for our attendees in the Zoom environment to use the raise hand feature. It looks like we have a few folks that have the raised hand feature. And as Mr. Bearman noted, there was, there was a written comment that came in and I believe that one of the speakers will be addressing that. But there was a second written comment that also came in and that speaker is also signed up to speak. So I'll let them present their views on those as I pull up the speaker timer and we'll go from there.
Bruce Camilloz, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the council this evening. My name is Bruce Camilloz and I am the new general manager of the Foreign Resource Conservation District in Elk Grove Water District. Although this is a new role for me, I'm not unfamiliar with our district. I've been with our district for 10 years and I'm proud to say that I have an excellent established relationship with many city staff individuals. Appreciate what we do together, appreciate our organizations partnering together to best serve the people in our community. We are a special district whose primary function is operating a water district for approximately 45,000 citizens in the Elk Grove community. In fact, the heart of our operation is smack dab in the middle of Old Town. That is where our primary supply of water for the community is located, which is the railroad water treatment plant. That is where I have spent the better part of my career. So I've had the benefit of watching Railroad Street and Old Town Plaza transform into what it is today. And wow, the city has done a fabulous job with what you've done. It's just, just beautiful. I am here this evening to make a request to the council to consider allowing the Foreign Resource Conservation District and Elk Grove Water District an opportunity to participate in the local funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. On July 21st, I sent a letter to the city manager, Jason Bearman, outlining this request. And this letter is included as attachment forward to this agenda item. As a special district, we do not have direct access to the ARPA funds. And so special districts must work through their respective cities and counties. Investments in water, sewer and broadband infrastructure is a category in which ARPA funds are made available as Mr. Bearman stated. And Elk Grove Water District has projects that are ready to go to replace aging water mains in the Old Town area. These old water mains are undersized, they're four inches in diameter. In some cases, that's very small and they need to be replaced by eight-inch pipes and updated to our current district standards. These water mains replacement projects are important to the residents and businesses in Old Town. Replacing the water mains and bringing them up to current standards improves the delivery of reliable water service to Old Town and importantly improves fire protection. Our customers, through the water rates that our district sets, pay for capital improvement projects like these. Any assistance to fund these important projects will help our district pay for the projects and that will directly benefit our customers who reside or own businesses in Elk Grove. Mayor, vice mayor and council members are respectfully asked for your consideration in our district's request to participate in the distribution of ARPA funds to help pay for these important Old Town projects. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you for calling in. We will go on to our next caller, please.
Angela Perry, you may go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Good evening again, Mayor Singh Allen and Vice Mayor Winn, council members. First, I'd like to thank Jason Bearman and the city staff for working with us on this. It was a pleasure coming up with this recommendation and working with them through the process. As you know, the mayor created a recovery task force to discuss ways in which we can better assist our community through the progression of our recovery in our, in our city. The task force respectfully submits to you today a recommendation for the use of a portion of the approximately $23 million anticipated in American Rescue Plan funds. As we all know, COVID-19 was devastating to virtually everyone. And of those most heavily affected, smaller and family-owned businesses have, that have held strong for years. Private business is the economic engine for Elk Grove and funding is critical for our city to return to a thriving economy. Many members of Elk Grove's business community have invested resources and time to comply with regulations only to find their operations shut down or significantly scaled back due to operational changes made by the state of California. We feel that a, a large portion of the 23 million in funding provided to the city through ARPA would greatly help businesses and nonprofits in Elk Grove get back on their feet and in turn bolster the economic health of our city as a whole. Funds should be available to help businesses retire debt, pay fixed costs and utilities, pay rent, rehire employees, purchase inventory and relaunch their businesses. To ensure fairness and a strategic allocation of funds, awards could be based on a, on a number of employees with larger awards provided to the hardest-hit industries. I've emailed you all a copy of the full recommendation, but in short, we respectfully submit the following priorities for the distribution of funds allocated to businesses and similar priorities for nonprofits. Companies should have 20 or fewer full-time employees based, based on quarter one, 2020. 25% or greater of net revenue loss due to COVID-19 based on identical timeframes in two years. Even in industries that did relatively well during the pandemic, expenses for some were extremely high in attempts to comply with regulations. So we believe net revenue should be the consideration. Companies should have $3 million in annual revenue or less based on 2019. There should be no penalty for having received previously, previous financial assistance of any kind. New owners of previously existing businesses may provide financial documentation from the previous owner if their own records do not cover the required timeframe. And there should be consideration for other unanticipated circumstances based on, on a case-by-case basis. We appreciate the opportunity to weigh in on the possible uses of these resources and are available for further discussion and to help in the process of distribution if needed. I'm available for any questions you might have. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Are any other callers?
And one last call to our folks that are in the attendee list. If you do wish to address this item, that raised hand function is what you want to use to indicate your desire to speak. Without seeing any raised hands, that will conclude public comment under item, item nine point one.
All right. Oh, I'm getting an echo again. I will close the public comment opportunity and open it up for council deliberations and direction. We will start with council member Hume.
Thank you, mayor. I have no comments. My one question would be for city manager Bearman, if we were to elect to divert a portion of the funds to the FRCD, do we have a way to guarantee that those monies would be used only for the Elk Grove Water Works and not for the larger resource conservation district?
Yes, you, you could allocate it to a specific project. If that was council's desire.
Okay, then I'll wait to hear from my other colleagues whether or not they have a desire to do that. I certainly recognize that that does benefit Elk Grove residents who, who pay their utilities, just like we all do. Other than that, I, I support staff's recommendation as the allocation. And I do appreciate whether we give any money to the water district or not, just the willingness to, to be a good community partner and recognize that even though this money does not flow out to special districts, that we are at least making that effort to try and be equitable as we all serve the same community. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council member Spies? Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so I'll, I guess I'll follow relative to the Elk Grove Water District. I guess what's difficult is when, when you look at their, their total ask is certainly a fairly large chunk, which obviously I don't think that we can support. I would like to see, I'd like to see a staff recommendation on, on what would be appropriate. It's, like I said, I wouldn't even know how to guess, you know, five dollars to seven million dollars is, is kind of their ask. So I'd like to see some recommendation relative to that. I'm really, I don't like the, the conditions under which this ARPA became necessary, right? So I don't want to be gleeful about this. What I do want to say, though, is one of the things that I'm most, for lack of a better term, excited about is the opportunity to do some workforce development for folks who were underemployed or dislocated relative, or because of the pandemic. These are the folks that need the assistance to retrain into better positions, right? So that they may be more resilient in the future. So I'm really happy to see that. And so, like I said, I'd really like to see kind of some sort of recommendation relative to Elk Grove Water. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. A point of clarification, as I move on, for the water district, it has, they have their own source of funds, generally speaking, and can ask for city, county, state, and federal assistance, but they're just not eligible for this.
Right. Yeah, there were, the, the funds are not allocated directly to special districts. So, but they are eligible if the state, county, or local government likes to provide direct funding, and then they are allowed to do so.
Do we know if they've exhausted all their grants, or are they in discussions, or do we have a sense of where those discussions are taking place to get a better assessment of the need?
I think Mr. Camillo's has his hand up, so he might be better able to answer that question. And while he does, he may also be able to help answer Councilmember Spees' question. I know he's well aware of the, the needs and the allocations. And, and so I guess the, the question back to Mr. Camillo's might be, you know, what is, what is the, what is the lowest dollar amount that, that, that makes sense to kind of fund a discrete project? Because recognizing that if the council chose to reallocate anything, they're going to be taking money away from very, you know, important projects that the community has already spoken for. So I, I can't really, I can't really speak for the water district as far as what funding would be needed in order to complete or have an impact on some of the projects in Old Town that he mentioned.
All right. Before we bring back Mr. Camillo's, we'll continue on with council comments, because it may trigger some additional questions. So I'll call him after, after some of the others have spoken. So we'll go on to Councilmember Soon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I do have similar questions. I would like to hear from Mr. Camillo's, but you know, in, in the spirit of good partnership, I mean, we're doing that with the CSD, but recognizing as Mr. Berman mentioned, what, you know, what we reallocate obviously takes away from something else. So perhaps there'd be, I guess I'll throw this back out to Jason. Is there an opportunity to sit down with Mr. Camillo's and see what the needs are? Are we able to take action tonight? So maybe, maybe stew on that for a little bit. I would just say real quickly that I'm, I'm, I'm pleased at least that our organization, our city, I've said this before, that we're in a situation where we can use some of these funds to, to help others. So that's, I guess that's the silver lining in, in all of this. But Mr. Berman, I'd appreciate if you have any thoughts on whether we could proceed forward with this and have future conversations with Mr. Camillo's.
Well, yeah, we can absolutely have future conversations. I think the question for, for council is whether there's, there's an interest in allocating, you know, a portion of the funds from somewhere else into that fund. And what is that dollar amount? And we can certainly talk offline with Mr. Camillo's about exactly what that would fund and how that would work. But, you know, that, that conversation is kind of fruitless unless there's a willingness from the council to take money away from one of the other pots and allocate it to that, that need. And it's a matter of priorities, right? They're all, they're all good things, including the water district. You have to make a decision whether that is more important than some of the other things that are on, on the list.
Yeah. And I think what I'm struggling with, and it sounds like my other colleagues are too, is we just don't even know what that ask is at that point. So maybe we'll wait to hear from Mr. Camillo's. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Thank you, ma'am. I echo the same as my colleagues, and I, I agree to be a good partner and maybe work something out with Mr. Camillo's. And I was really excited to see the workforce development piece, as Councilmember Spees says, as a person who does workforce development every day, all day in my line of work, I'm really excited to see what that's going to look like. But as Councilmember Soon said, it'd be great if we could figure it out. And I understand, Mr. Berman, we've got to figure out what pot we're going to take from. But hopefully, we can figure that out tonight, so that way we could take the, the vote at the next meeting on this. And, and Mr. Camillo's, I will add that, you know, you're not going to get the full ask, know that, of which you support. But anything is better than nothing at all, right? So the fact that we're even having this conversation, just realize that we have to take away, as Mr. Berman said, from another pot, pots in which we've already dedicated to, pots in which we all have a passion for, really want to be able to give back to our community. And we want to work with you as well, too. But understanding that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I echo the, some of the same comments. Highlights for me in this, I definitely want to be a champion for the CSD. I know that part of those funds would go towards technology that I saw firsthand on July, on July 4th, I did a ride along with our fire chief. And the last call that I answered with the fire chief that evening was actually in the early morning hours at 12:45. And what appeared to be, you know, a drunk driver that had crashed through somebody's house was laying on, on the, on the sidewalk and looked like they were deceased. It was a very troubling sight, and some of the technology that was used was, was critical. So I know that their ask comes with very specific needs that will be used to fund that. So I think that that's, that's really important. Obviously, a big proponent and champion for our small business community who have suffered tremendously during COVID with the closures, the quarantine, the mask mandates, the uncertainty of when they can open and how they can open. And we're dealing with it today with the new requirements for even those that are vaccinated. These are challenging times, and our small business community has suffered a lot. The nonprofits also have suffered, as Mr. Berman mentioned, with the loss of revenue, with not having events. It's been tremendous. And the food bank has answered that call to service and really have gone above and beyond, along with the others. But I single them out because they are providing that emergency services of food assistance for food insecure families, which we know COVID has impacted thousands of more families than normally that would use the food bank than years past. All of the nonprofits are homeless, are flexible homeless solutions. I think that that's great because we are looking at diverse opportunities to help, help fill that need for our homeless community. Workforce development, absolutely big champion, particularly with the job training and the reskills initiative for those that have been hardest hit as well. Economic recovery appears not just for helping our businesses, but our, but our working families. So I know that this will go a long way. My challenge personally, while I want to be a great partner, is that balancing act of where do we take pots of money to allocate? So I do invite Mr. Camillo's to join us in the conversation. My, my question to you, sir, first of all, welcome to your new role. We haven't met, but I imagine we will at some point, is the specific ask, you've heard from our council members, the need is great, and this is just partial needs. Our, our needs outweigh all of this. So where can we specifically help you? And then secondly, have you exhausted all efforts to secure funding, grants from the county, from the state, from the federal, and different opportunities that are available to you that would not be available necessarily to us or, or others? I definitely am interested to hear from you in terms of exhausting all means of receiving additional funding to support some of those items that you have outlined in your letter.
And, and Madam Mayor, I'm sorry if I may, one other thing that hopefully we could ask him to elaborate is if there were any specific losses relative to COVID, right? So if there, you know, just like we had some revenue losses as a result, we could elaborate that, because those would certainly seem to be more of a priority. So.
Yeah, absolutely. And as we queue up, Mr. Camillo's to join us, I do want to recognize and thank the city for all of the outreach efforts, because we wanted a very transparent and inclusive process. While the survey isn't scientific, the feedback is instrumental. And what I appreciated is that it, the feedback has been very consistent with not only staff recommendations, but also on the task force and others. So it's been great to see that the community is really rallying around some of the same areas and are concerned about the same things that all of us care about and are passionate about. So, you know, just the exhaustive methods, not only reaching out through our newsletters, but our social media, we've, we shared it with all of our respective committees and commissions. And so it's, it's definitely been very inclusive. So I definitely wanted to recognize the city for their outreach efforts and communication efforts as we secured as much feedback as we could and provide a very transparent process in allocating these funds. And of course, thanking Congressman Barra. While it's money I wish that we didn't need, it took this horrible tragedy to get here. But we thank you for your advocacy for our city. With that, I will turn it over to see if Mr. Camillo's is ready to answer some of those questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate very much you allowing me to answer some of these thoughtful questions. Yes, I understand there are many needs within our community. And so, and we have, we will be able to answer Councilmember Spees's question. We hope to be able to access funds to, to cover the nonpayments on many accounts that are in arrears. The state is making money available through the state Water Resources Control Board for that purpose. And we will be submitting our information to the state water board to try to get some money, but that has to be specifically used to credit accounts that are in arrears. So the only other we have, we've looked for other grant money. We do not have any other grant money at this time. I have reached out to the county as well as, as the city here for the purpose of getting some funding available to us to do water infrastructure projects. And the Old Town projects that I'm speaking of are very well-defined in our five-year capital improvement program. We have specific projects in and around Old Town with cost estimates associated with each project, water main replacement project. These are old, undersized four-inch diameter water mains that need to be replaced. They will vastly improve the water delivery in Old Town. And these individual water main replacement projects ranging costs from around $200,000 to around $500,000. So I realize the ask of my letter is very large. I do not expect those to be made whole at all. And frankly, I would be delighted to be able to get some money through the city's funds to help with these capital projects. Thank you.
Mr. Berman, did you want to respond at all?
Yeah, just, just a thought. I appreciate what Mr. Camillo said. And, you know, I think if you're looking as far as categories to take it from, we have two categories right now that are for infrastructure. One is the broadband project, and one is economic development, the infrastructure, the other infrastructure, which includes other utilities. And so there certainly could be a reallocation from some of, some of those amounts. If you're looking to fund, let's say, you know, a half million dollars or a million dollars to the water district, probably the easiest place to take it from without impacting, or the other ones would be from one of those funds. I would, I would suggest that if we did allocate some funds to the, the water district, the funds, you know, we, we U-Direct staff to make sure those funds are allocated to the greatest needs and also be able to assist with the Old Town businesses, because, you know, the infrastructure, what Mr. Camillo's talks about, this could also be another kind of economic development tool that you use to replace some water mains and things down in, in Old Town that also was a secondary, you know, tool for those, those businesses. So it's still, you know, it's a different way of helping businesses, but it's, it's certainly still kind of goes to the same main purpose regarding, you know, infrastructure for some of those, those needs.
I see a hand raised. Councilmember Soon?
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking along those same lines. I'd go a step farther and, and suggest that we keep broadband and look at the economic development funds, since we also have an economic development opportunity reserve. If we needed to, we could seek other sources for that. So the other thing I was thinking of was to give staff more time, is we can go ahead and improve the budget as proposed for, for the 2021 year and, and look at helping Mr. Camillo's in the second round, the funds that come in next year. And that would give us some time to work out a work plan with Mr. Camillo's and then bring that back for, for us to, to consider.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees?
Yeah, so I, I kind of like Darren's idea in bif, excuse me, Councilman Soon's idea in bifurcating 2021 from 2022, because where, where I guess I'm still troubled is, I don't know what a meaningful number is for the Elk Grove Water District. You, you gave me, oh, it could be $200,000, or it could be $6 million. I, I don't want to say, oh, give them $50,000, and you can't do a darn thing with it. I'd like to give a reasonable, effective number, but I didn't hear that. So, I mean, if we could, and if that's perhaps where folks want to go with it, I would, you know, I would, I would follow Councilmember Soon relative to approving the 2021.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Soon, you had some great, great insight there. Let's hear from some of our other colleagues. Councilmember Hume, if you wanted to add any additional comments or thoughts on this?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Nothing to add. I like Councilmember Soon's idea.
All right. So Councilmember Soon, do you want to recap that and maybe make a motion in there?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So I'll make a motion to move the work plan for this year, 2021, and bring back work plan for 2022, reallocating a portion of the economic development funds to the Elk Grove Water District as, as vetted or decided upon from, from staff. So allowing staff the opportunity to take a look at the CIP and see what might be, what might be warranted.
Can I ask the, the motioner to amend the motion to include/or the broadband funds, whichever one staff determines is most appropriate?
Sure, that's fine.
Then I'll second.
All right. So we have a motion before us in a second. Do you have sufficient direction, Mr. Berman?
I believe so. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, I support. So we'll go ahead, and we have a motion in a second. So let's go to our roll.
And that roll call vote, I will start with Councilmember Spees.
Aye.
Councilmember Hume?
Aye.
Councilmember Soon?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Nguyen?
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen?
Aye.
It sounds like that's the direction being provided for item nine point one. I believe that will conclude that item.
All right, very good. We will go on to our next item here.
That's section 10, council comments, reports, and future agenda items.
All right. We will see who has reports, starting with Councilmember Spees.
It just, one report and then one question. So first report being the Sacramento Public Library Authority has started the search for a new executive director. That'll be happening within the next several months. Then my second question, I guess, is, is back to Mr. Berman. Then my second question, I guess, is, is back to Mr. Bearman. I believe last city council, we discussed the possibility of town halls related to homelessness issues. Is there any progress or update relative to that? I probably should have asked that in the administrative, but I'll ask now.
We don't have date yet, but I know staff is working on it, I believe. I think Sarah Bond Trigger was on here. I'm not sure if she's still on here anymore. I think Darren Wilson is on here if he has any, any specific updates.
Okay. Well, I mean, I just, I just bring it up because it is litter, homelessness, are issues that we are continuing to hear a lot about. And, and I think we, we need to keep working on getting one of those town hall shows in order.
I imagine you'll want to, now that we have approved allocation for homelessness, that would be perhaps incorporated? I mean, what do you envision this, or maybe that's still yet to be fleshed out? Is this just an update, or is it how we're addressing it? What, you know, because there's a lot of misconceptions of numbers and, you know, really what's going on and.
Sure. I don't know that staff has fully flushed that out yet. We're certainly, certainly open to input and direction from council. I think it's a, it's a great idea to be able to get out there and talk about it. So I think it's a little bit of all of those things, which is, you know, a little bit of the, the status where we are now, how, how things are working, what our current programs are, and then what we're looking to do with the additional Rescue Act funds, I think are all potential topics of discussion during those meetings. I saw Darren jumping in here, so Darren, I don't know if you want to add anything.
I, I think you're correct, Jason. We're, we're working on this item and come up. I think the ultimate goal was to educate our public, not only through the Elk Grove Apartments project, but to educate our public in general on affordable housing, what is, as well as homelessness. And that includes probably strategies on, you know, both those items.
The other Darren houses hand raised. I read Mr. Soon.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I brought this up last time, and I've been talking a lot with Sarah about it. And we still haven't used out a specific agenda, but Darren Wilson is, is correct. You know, we wanted to educate on the items of, you know, homelessness, affordable housing, and how affordable housing actually works, because it's a different business model than, you know, your typical housing. And then, of course, adding in, you know, what we, the city, are trying to do about it. So there's really a lot, of course, a lot of information. But I think the first step is to, is just the education piece and understanding how the, you know, the affordable housing and homelessness are interrelated. And so that, those are the broad topics that, that we.
And I imagine, sorry, go ahead.
There, there's, I mean, there seems to be a common misconception that we're not doing anything about it, which is fundamentally, categorically untrue that we're doing nothing about it. And I'd like to get on the, have us get on the road show and help people understand that we're doing everything that we can because we, A, care about people, and B, want to have a fantastic city. So I, I won't, you know, I don't want to continue discussion on the items because I don't want to get in trouble relative to that. But I was just curious on where we were with that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And that compassionate lens, you know, because that gets missed in the dialogue, obviously. And I would certainly be interested along those lines as it relates to how that delivery of these town halls do now with those new mandates and so forth coming down a Zoom platform during the afternoon, during the evening. I'm sure you'll figure all of those things out, but these are moving parts. So other council reports, Councilmember Soon.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
Away with my report. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Wynn.
I'll just make it quick. I was able to finally complete my ALF wilderness experience. I know that Councilmember Soon and Councilmember Hume are graduates of ALF program already. I've been asked several times, but wasn't able to do it just due to personal reasons and workload and was able to finally go through it and really, really appreciated the wilderness experience with over 20 others and being off the grid for six days and just returning yesterday. So I'm just now getting back into the groove of things.
That's why you didn't answer my text. I'm kidding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Been busy even, you know, since the last month, we haven't all convened. We've had two by twos with the CSD, the county, did a sub little meeting with the task force as it relates to the vaccines and really reaching out to additional groups, the younger age groups. More, more to come on that as we get the data back from the county, which will happen here shortly, working with Supervisor Natoli's office on that, as well as some of our healthcare providers. Had an amazing ride along with our fire chief on the 4th of July, just an eye-opening experience. I will be going on another ride along with our, one of our police officers this Saturday. So looking forward to that. Just to give a shout out to the police department on an initiative they launched today, popsicles and police. Had an opportunity to stop by one of those at, at one of the four parks that they were launched at, and it was just a great, great to see young kids and all families just sort of interacting in a very positive way with our police department. So I just really appreciate those kinds of community opportunities where our law enforcement engages with residents. It was great. So just a shout out on that. And then for those of you who might be wondering why we are still on Zoom, as you know, today, the mandates changed from the state and CDC and requiring masks for indoor meeting environments, even for those that are vaccinated. So like all of you, it creates challenges in trying to adapt for these ever-changing environments out of an abundance of caution and safety for our, for our staff and even ourselves, our colleagues. We opted to go back to the Zoom because it made it easier than dealing with the face mask mandates, even though most of us, probably all of us are vaccinated, which really is that last bit, you know, that this Delta variant is very dangerous. I've lost family members. I've lost friends to COVID. We actually have a friend who lives in Elk Grove who has been hospitalized this past week and is on oxygen. He's unvaccinated in his mid-30s. And this Delta variant is no joke, so please take it seriously. There are many places to get a vaccine. I want to resume life to normal like all of you, but we all need to do our fair share. So if we personally know friends and family, to the extent that we can be ambassadors, please encourage those that are not vaccinated to get vaccinated so we can all be safe and healthy and resume life to normal. So with that, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Thank you, everyone. Be safe, be healthy.